Think about it, one of the most basic tenants in the way we could help families is to provide a roof over their head because that is after all the American dream. And as he also so eloquently stated, this is not only about helping those families who got themselves into this situation, this is about helping neighborhoods. If you stabilize one or two or three for closed properties in a neighborhood, it goes a long way to stabilizing a neighborhood and not have boarded up homes in any neighborhood. So Mr. Alarcon, kudos to you and I think we all need to do our homework now so the event or when the federal money does get here, we are ready to use it once it arrives. Thank you.
Referring to a three-pronged approach, Council President Eric Garcetti gives statistics from the city's housing hotline.
The hotline that we set up just around the time that Mr. Zuma Dogg was talking about home foreclosures, we actually have served over 50,000 people on that hotline, estimated about 10,000 people have probably been kept in their homes because of that because we got out early in 2007 with that. That said, we still have a daunting number of resets next month and so this couldn't come at a better time because those adjustable rate mortgages which will reset again in March are going to have another slew of home foreclosures. And really whatever we can do when we hear tomorrow, I think there will be the most important part of that package will be trying to pay down or reset some of the principal on the loans and that would be critical for the success of keeping many people still in their homes and even getting people back in by revaluing homes at the value they actually are at today. It's in the bank's interest to do so, it certainly is in our community's interest to do so. So in the meantime, you have my full support for this program, Mr. Alarcon. The question was asked where this federal money comes from? It's not federal money, it's actually local community redevelopment money, local taxes being reinvested locally which is the best vision of community redevelopment. So with that, I hope that we're all past this and also continue to let folks know they can call our Housing Department directly if you're close to foreclosure. Do not give up, but reach out now, don't wait a couple of months because then it's too late. Thank you.
District One Councilmember Ed Reyes calls to the center table Mercedes Marquez, the general manager of the Los Angeles Housing Department, to ask about the available housing inventory in Los Angeles.
The question I have is about stock, the type of buildings. My assumptions are that in certain areas you have more apartments that are going through foreclosures than you would have two or three bedroom or one or two bedroom type homes. Would this demonstration program allow us to learn in terms of what it would take to address not only homes for two bedroom, three bedroom, two car garage type homes but apartments that affect, that are impacting families but are also being foreclosed upon? Do you feel that we have enough of a variety, if you will, of types of buildings so we can learn from this demonstration and figure out how to apply it citywide? Please hold my time.
Good morning. Councilman, that's a great question and it all depends ultimately on what kind of dollars are allowed to be used. Let me, for just a moment, we have an issue, the federal dollars for the national, for this neighborhood stabilization program are very specific. The 33 million that we're going to receive shortly have clear limitations. They may only be used for properties whether they're multifamily or single family that have already been foreclosed on. We cannot use CDBG dollars under the current law or even home dollars to help anybody other than a first-time home buyer. So for instance, the program that Mr. Weisard is talking about for helping folks with a $5,000 help down payment and pay for costs cannot currently be paid by CDBG or home dollars. It is very clearly prohibited. So what we're going to have to wait and see is that the new dollars that are being signed today in the stimulus package, Councilwoman Garcetti was correct, they put back $2 billion. That may be more broadly available and I'm certainly speaking and I know many of others of you are as well, to give us more flexibility to actually help homeowners that are currently in homes. Because the regular CDBG rules do not permit it, the home rules do not permit it, and the first NSP program does not permit it. So we need the second bit of money to be more flexible to do that.
This city generates about $4 billion and banks are holding our money. Banks are making money off our money. Yet these are the same banks who are, we are waiting for to bring down that principle because of the fact that everything is devalued and we're waiting for them to decide when they will do that, when they make money off of our tax dollars as well?
Well, yes, that's true, but let me also say this. We're in a position that other cities would love to be in, right? If you would go into the rust belt of this country, there is absolutely no housing market at all, right? Their values have dropped in the area of 80 percent, completely wiped out. In Los Angeles, we have a housing market.
Thanking and supporting her colleagues, District Three Councilmember Wendy Gruel offers some advice and encouragement to homeowners.
A special plug to remind people that there are individuals out there who are trying to take advantage of you. Call the Neighborhood Legal Services, Beth Seddick, all of the other programs that are out there and the Housing Department. Many people who say, "I can make your troubles go away and provide you a miracle," usually it's not true. And so we encourage you to call those who actually know how to handle this, but also not be afraid to call your bank. I went to an opening the other day where they were putting together a program where banks are saying they're having a hard time because people don't want to return their phone calls. There's nothing worse than being the recipient of a phone call that says you haven't paid your bill and just wanting to avoid it. Don't avoid it, step up, there are programs out there that we can help work with you and hopefully the city of Los Angeles additionally will use some of those dollars we have to be able to assist people who are facing foreclosure. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, please open the roll then on the item. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That is approved. Thank you all very much.
Continuing with the housing theme, Item Nine, a motion submitted by Councilmember Jose Wezar suggests using current or future state and federal housing funds to assist low and moderate homeowners. Mr. Wezar explains some of the details of his motion.
What this motion does is ask that we start preparing a plan in the event that more federal money does come in so that we do one of two things. One is possibly provide refinancing assistance up to $5,000 for low and moderate income families. And this is even more important because just today, there was a newspaper article that says that Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac are raising their fees for people to refinance. So two things are happening opposite each other, where we're having more foreclosures, people would want to refinance but cannot come up with the fees, and Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac are raising their fees. So that's even more important that we help people refinance if they so choose. And secondly, to possibly create a soft second, and again, President Obama is expected to announce tomorrow more details on how he hopes or how the country hopes to help people who are in foreclosure. He's going to make that announcement in Phoenix tomorrow, one of the most hardest-hit cities in the United States with his foreclosure measure. Thank you very much.
Seated again at the center table, General Manager of the Housing Department Mercedes Marquez answers questions from District Eight Councilmember Bernard Parks about government loans.
How do we go about, and I'm assuming you're talking about one-way loans and things of that nature and others that we deal with, how do we go about changing or at least addressing or bringing that policy forward? Because if I understand it, many of the monies that we put forward to small businesses to help them get created are now suffering because they can't pay their loans back. So we have all that job creation that now falls on top of the issue of unemployment. I'm just wondering, how do we get into discussion about those types of federal or government loans?
My sense is that with the $2 billion that was included in the stimulus package, that is Neighborhood Stabilization Program Two, that, the language seems to be more broadly written to allow for some different things. I certainly expect, I can tell you, that I meet with a group of five housing directors for the five high-cost cities in the country. So the cities of New York, Boston, Chicago, Los Angeles, and San Francisco work together on policies that very specifically affect high-cost markets. We have already taken up this question about what it is we should be recommending to the Housing and Urban Development Department in Washington about that money. How is it that it could be more broadly written to permit us, for instance, to do some of the things that are included in Councilwoman Weisard's motion? Right now, we could not use that dollars. So we would have to use CRA dollars, use other money, it would be an issue in the budget frankly, to carve out the kind of money that could do that when federal dollars can't. The other dollars to be looked at, I think, are not traditionally looked at for this purpose. But the federal stimulus also has about $1.5 billion in ESG that is usually used for homeless, but it seems to be a little bit more broadly written so that it may be used as homelessness prevention. So we may be able to take a look at that to help families that are in to keep them in. So we're going to be studying those very carefully. I can tell you that I am aggressively, along with these other cities, taking a look. We're planning to go in March as five cities to look at this. We're, you know, actually, we're speaking already to Councilwoman Garcetti about this, we're speaking to the mayor's office about all moving together. I've also actually spoken with your staff as well as Councilwoman Perry's staff about this so that we take the right position to help us have some flexibility. Because without it, we're just not going to be able to very effectively deal with the problem.
Homeownership used to be the American dream, according to District Seven Councilmember Richard Alarcon, who believes the problem is that we've allowed Los Angeles to become a rental city.
Members, I hope that we, we understand that we're sort of playing a game of musical chairs unless we deal with the root causes of the problem. I agree with Zuma Dogg on the issue of foreclosures as a crisis. But long before there was a foreclosure crisis, there was a crisis in Los Angeles that we have allowed our city to become a rental city. The vast majority of people that live in Los Angeles do not own the home that they live in. And as a nation, we are doing the same thing. The crisis that emerged did not emerge because of the foreclosure problem. The crisis occurred because we have a failure of our work, our working-class community to have the ability, the assets and the collateral to be able to generate consumerism. And unless Los Angeles targets as a goal to increase the proportion of homeownership, we're dancing, we're dancing at the party and the band is ready to leave. We are not going to be able to solve this problem unless we create more homeownership, unless we provide the opportunity for more people to have an asset that they can rely on, that they can collateralize and purchase other things. That's the way our society works. We are at a state where 70 percent of the people that live in a home in Los Angeles are not living in a home that they own. They have no collateral, they can't buy a car, they can't even buy a refrigerator. Yes, it, we have created this situation before the foreclosure crisis, but what is happening now is we are responding to the foreclosure crisis, we are not responding to the fundamental issues.
Let's go ahead and open the roll on this item. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That is approved. Thank you.
And joining us now is District Fourteen Councilmember Jose Wezar. Mr. Wezar, welcome to Council Week in Review.
Thank you very much, Jack. Happy to be here.
Of course, we all know the housing market is in turmoil, not only in Los Angeles but across the nation. And your motion on Tuesday consisted, as I understand it, of two parts, refinancing using state and federal funds in a mortgage assisted assistance program. Will the President's stimulus package be of any help here in LA?
Well, not as currently designed. We are hoping that they earmark more of that money for preventing foreclosures. We know that the Treasury Department has received some money and they intend to help homeowners who are losing their homes, to prevent them from losing homes. But right now, what we see, a lot of the federal money or a lot of the guidelines that direct the federal money only help homeowners post-foreclosure. And what my motion intended to do was to say, hey, let's prevent people from losing their homes and not come in after the fact. And so that's why I suggest that any new money that comes to cities to help prevent, to help with the foreclosure problem, that $5,000 go to cover refinancing fees because, first of all, these folks who are losing their homes, they would love to refinance, get a lower interest rate and be able to manage what they're paying monthly for their mortgage, but some of them can't even pay the fees associated with refinancing. And not to mention that just this week Freddie Mac and Fannie Mae actually are raising their fees, it comes into, becomes more important.
Well, obviously Freddie Mac and Fannie Mae are in big trouble as well.
Yes.
Of course, the Housing Department is due to report back in 30 days on how the program might work to actually help homeowners refinance. How do you see the program working and who do you think would be eligible?
Well, anyone who is near to losing their home or would want to inquire about this, we would see if they qualify obviously, but we got to remember that between January 2007 and June of 2008, there were about 10,400 multi- and single-family properties that were foreclosed. So we want to lower this number significantly. And what we see is hopefully, the federal government and the federal money that comes in, we want to be prepared with a program that's in place so when that money comes in, we have that program in place to do more pre-foreclosure efforts throughout the city of Los Angeles. And so it may be with covering the fees, it may be to give these homeowners a soft second, but it would really be, or go towards those families who need the help. And we got to remember, we're not only doing this to help those individual families, but we're doing this to stabilize communities. It doesn't benefit anyone if we see more and more homes boarded up because then that will start more deterioration in the community and lead to more crime, et cetera. This is about not only saving those families who are hurting, but also saving communities and stabilizing those communities where these homes are in.
When we hear about the federal stimulus package, they keep talking about shovel-ready projects. On the top program side that you're talking about, you're talking about mortgage assistance-ready programs.
Mortgage assistance-ready programs, yes. It's not the term of art that's now being used about shovel-ready projects. This is more those families who could step forward and show that there's a real need for them to get this assistance. And there's a lot of them out there. I mean, before it was just a few folks who couldn't afford to make their mortgage payment, but now you're seeing a lot more folks who have stable jobs, a decent pay, who are falling into this category.
Could you give us a little more detail on how this mortgage assistance program would actually work?
Sure. We would want to have anyone who could, who needs assistance to, once they qualify for refinancing, to be able to show that the current payment that they would make even after they refinance, that they perhaps would need a little help to continue making those payments monthly. And depending on the formulas that we come up with, we would provide an additional loan to these individuals so that they could make those monthly payments each month up to a certain time so that after that time expires, hopefully these folks will be in better footing and the financial crisis has passed and they would be able to not only hopefully provide for the full amount of the loan they have taken out, but start repaying back the loan to the city if they can at that time.
We've heard about reinvestment of local monies, we've heard about state monies, and you and I were just talking about federal funding as well. Is there currently funding available or are we waiting for new monies to come in?
We're actually waiting for new monies to come in because the little money that has been available from the federal government, like I said, that's been for post-foreclosure relief and there's very little of it. For example, in my district in Bull Heights, we are actually working with a group called East LA Community Corporation that's going into some of these homes that have been foreclosed and they're working with the city to purchase these properties and rehabilitate them and get them back on the market so that we stabilize those neighborhoods. What we're looking at is to continue doing some of that, but get new funding and the direction that is given by my motion is to tell our Housing Department, let's focus on pre-foreclosure and let's get a program ready so that when the stimulus money comes in through the Treasury Department, we are ready to hit the ground running and start preventing families from losing their homes.
As you know, the council approved a pilot program for foreclosure prevention in District Seven. Do you expect that program to eventually include other districts and where would be the funding for this limited program coming from?
Well, it actually will help tremendously because we can learn a lot from that. Along with my motion, that same day in Council District Seven, we passed a motion to use some community redevelopment agency dollars. Now again, these are local dollars, $1.5 million to create a pilot project area where we could do a lot of what my motion is talking about, plus other items that could really stabilize that whole neighborhood. So this pilot project is actually a beginning, it's a good thing for us to do using local money. The local council member there actually wanted to, given the number of foreclosures that have hit that area hard, along with South Los Angeles is another area that's been hit quite, quite hard, we wanted to do something immediately to prevent more homes from going into foreclosure. But then again, that's doing two things. One is it's using local money and which we don't have a lot of to continue doing this type of work. But secondly, it does some of the pre-foreclosure items that my motion is talking about, such as covering the refinance fees, perhaps a soft second, plus other items that could, we could hopefully use in other parts of the city. And again, the areas that have been hard-hit are the Pacoima area, the South Los Angeles area, and those are the two areas that have been hit the hardest with these foreclosures.
By the way, for people who don't know, could you explain briefly the soft second mortgages that you're talking about?
Yes, that would actually go towards helping those individuals who do not have additional funding to complete their monthly mortgage payment. And the soft seconds will help these individuals complete their monthly mortgage payment and it will be a loan so that eventually these individuals get in better footing, they would be able to pay the city back with those additional dollars we have lent out.
You talked about the fees associated with the refinancing and we know that there's been a so-called credit freeze around the country. But isn't it still possible to get no fee, no points loans in refinancing?
It is. It is possible to get additional benefits right now, but again, we're at record level low-interest loans, but just covering some of these fees for the transactions themselves, even though you may get a good interest rate or even there may, there be no points, there are other costs associated that are not within the category when they advertise that there are no points that cost money to make these transactions possible. And you know, these may cost anywhere, you know, from a couple of thousand dollars to six, seven thousand dollars and so we're hoping that we are able to cover this and help people take advantage of lower interest rates if they refinance.
Better read it all before you sign.
Yes, and there's a lot of documents there too.
Yes.
They're hard to understand and you know, that's why the Housing Department's available right now. We've, they're ready to not only help if people are close to being foreclosed, they should call the Housing Department or even if they are refinancing, call the Housing Department and we will get them some assistance to make sure that their refinancing is going, is properly being done. Always, we got to watch out for people who try to take advantage of others in these needy times and the Housing Department is here, ready and willing to help those who just call and look us up on the internet to get that advice.
Good advice. What about first-time homebuyers, frankly? Is there any assistance or help for them?
Right now, well, there's always been first-time homebuyer assistance from our Housing Department. We, looking at the housing market, the crisis we are in, you know, that help has always been there, but it seems like preventing foreclosures and helping those projects that are in trouble because of the economic downturn, that's kind of taking precedence over right now. But frankly, the City Council and the City of Los Angeles have a public policy goal of supporting tenants and supporting first-time homeowners and supporting those tenants to become the first-time homeowners and that's always been a public policy goal of the city. It stabilizes neighborhoods and that's what we want to see.
District Fourteen Councilmember Jose Wezar, as always, thank you for joining us on Council Week in Review.
Thank you so much, Jack.
And again, for information on housing, including buying programs, renting and renters' rights and much more, go to the Los Angeles Housing Department's website at lahd.lacity.org. There's also a list of phone numbers that you can call depending on your housing situation and where you live. You can get the specific number you need by simply dialing 311, your one call to City Hall. And we invite you to address the Los Angeles City Council on any item on the council agenda as well as during public comment. You may come downtown to City Hall or go to the Van Nuys City Hall and participate via video teleconferencing. Remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, beginning at 10:00 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10:00 a.m. Council Week in Review can be seen Monday through Friday at 9:30 a.m. and 6:30 p.m. And on Sunday at 9:30 a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending February 20th, 2009. On behalf of Michael Flynn and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
L.A. City View, Channel 35. Your city, your channel.
Please come down as soon as...
Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the City Council meeting for February 27th, 2009. We're here in the John Farrow Council Chamber, Room 340 of City Hall, where we meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. And we're broadcast live on Channel 35 and we welcome our viewers throughout the city's cable system and those guests who have joined us as well in council chambers today. I'm Council President Eric Garcetti and I'm joined by my colleagues who are here on time and I'd like to thank them and name them, Councilmember Richard Alarcon, Bernard Parks, Jan Perry, Herb Wesson, and Dennis Zein. That leaves the rest of the council that we are waiting, except for Ms. Gruel who is excused and Mr. Weiss who's excused and Ms. Hahn is excused to arrive later in the meeting. So Mr. Cardness, Mr. Wezar, Mr. LeBange, thank you, Mr. Wezar. Mr. Reyes, Mr. Rosendahl, and Mr. Smith will please join us. We will begin with a full quorum shortly. In the meantime, as I mentioned, we're broadcast live on Channel 35, but we're also available through the internet if you're close to a computer and that's convenient for you. You can go to our city's homepage at lacity.org and catch live streaming webcasts of our council meetings. We also archive our past council meetings there for your convenience and those are linked to our agendas which are also available online as well as here in person, 72 hours in advance or 24 hours in advance for our special agenda items. Finally, if you're not close to a computer or a television, you can always use your handy phone and call in on Council Phone, which is another service of the city to listen in to any of our committee meetings or council meetings. The number to call is 213-621-CITY. Again, that's 213-621-CITY. And a final way, you could always sign up for our podcasts, also at the city's homepage, lacity.org. On that page, you'll also find links to a wealth of information about city departments, elected officials, and other ways to... It's two minutes per speaker, and there are items that have already received public hearings. Those can be reopened by the council if any of the council members so chooses. So again, thank you for your patience. We will begin shortly, in about one or two minutes, with our very first presentation. Thank you. Well, we are going to begin our presentations, and each Friday, we start with our presentations, and I'd like to recognize the council member from the 10th Council District, since he has a guest that needs to leave City Hall for our special adoption Fridays. Councilmember Herb Wesson.
Dexter needs a prank. Come on, Jesse. Good morning, Mr. President and members. Oh, sorry about that. Let's pick Jesse up. Anyway, today is one of my favorite days because it's Pet Adoption Friday, and today we have Jesse, who's a terrier mix. She's four, four months old. She's looking for a home. She comes from the shelter that's in the district that I represent. She is a, she is a she. She, does she have all of her shots?
She does have all of her shots.
Say it.
She does have all of her shots. Jesse is, we have her down as a terrier. We think she's a labradoodle.
A labradoodle.
Labrador poodle mix.
Oh.
Mm-hmm.
And my...
She's gonna be a larger dog.
My wife is here today. My wife, Fabian, do you want to take the dog home? A friend for our dogs? Okay, since my wife has overruled me, we are looking for a home for Jesse, who's a very affectionate dog. We, last week, we had Flavio. Mr. President, I want to inform everybody that Flavio has, in fact, been adopted, so we have maintained our 100% adoption rate. So for, if there's anybody here in the council chambers that would like to take this beautiful companion avenue, I mean, companion avenue, companion dog, home, she'll be in the back for a little while. For those of you that will watch this on television, please give us, please give us a call at the phone number, I think the phone number is displayed on the television screen. I don't have the number. You may have a number where they can call. Get closer.
You can call, you can call the shelter at 888-452-7381, or you can call the South LA Shelter directly at 213-485-0117. And her animal ID number is A1013057.
So please, remember, the city of Los Angeles, we are constantly in a contest with the County of Los Angeles. We must win, so we must find Jesse a home. So please, give us a call, or if there happens to be a member that's watching this from television, an employee, a staff person, please, we'll have Jesse in the back, come and see us, and she is about as cute as she can be. Let's let him get one more good shot. Look at Jesse. Here, look. Now, how could you say no to this face?
Thank you very much, Mr. Wesson. There you go. Somebody's coming here.
Hey, we're trying to find Jesse. You go home with him and make a movie. Just, we'll teach you some tricks. Anyway, good to see you. Good to see you.
All right, and with that, we'd like to recognize the council member from the 8th District, Mr. Bernard Parks, and Mr. Clerk, if you'll please call the roll, while Mr. Parks comes forward to the podium. Thank you.
Alakon, Cardenas, Gruel, Hahn, Weza, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 10 members present, and a quorum. Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'd ask Ms. Perry to come up and join me. Today, we have a very, very special guest. Any of you, as they say, he needs no introduction, but I'm gonna introduce him anyway, and I'm gonna ask Lou Gossett Jr. to come up to the podium. And Lou has joined here today with his son, Satie. You can stay there and keep filming, but, but let me give a little background. All of us know Lou Gossett Jr. as an internationally acclaimed actor, humanitarian, social entrepreneur, social justice advocate, and a visionary. Probably the best-known roles that he's played was Fiddler in the groundbreaking 1977 television miniseries Roots, in which he won an Emmy. He's also Oscar-winning performance in A Officer and a Gentleman. Go ahead. His enduring presence has been over five decades, in which we know in this industry, many people are a one-shot wonder. He's been around for five decades. He ranks as one of the most respected and beloved actors on stage, screen, and television. In addition to his Oscar, he is a recipient of multiple Golden Globes and People's Choice Award. He's also starred in several well-known movies: The Deep in 2007, Daddy's Little Girl, The Highwayman, Enemy's Mind, Toy Soldiers, and The Punisher. He's also the first African-American male to win an Academy Award for the Best Supporting Actor in 1982. He's also had a number of stage performances in Raisin in the Sun, Golden Boy, and Chicago. He attended New York University on an athletic scholarship, and this is something I didn't know until we went through it, and briefly played for the New York Knicks before deciding to focus exclusively on acting. Recently, he became the new lead on the popular science fiction series Stargate SG-1, and he's the voice of Lucius Fox in the most recent Batman series. Mr. Gossett's fan base now spans the teens to the baby boomers, and he's using this opportunity now to speak out regularly to youth across the country and the world, encouraging self-respect, respect for elders, and respect for number, members of the opposite sex. In 2006, he founded his foundation in racism, and is dedicated to creating entertainment that brings education and awareness to issues such as racism, ignorance, and social apathy. This is something that we wanted to bring him here. He and I saw each other, if we don't see each other during the year, we see each other at least once a year in Atlanta, because he's always a part of the Trumpet Awards, and we asked him then, would he be interested in coming to City Council, and he said yes, and he fulfilled his word. And before I give him this plaque, I'd like to ask Ms. Jan Perry to make some comments.
Thanks, Mr. Parks. I just wanted to say how proud I am to stand up here with Mr. Gossett and with Mr. Parks, who are both fine gentlemen and incredible role models to young men everywhere, and I had a chance to speak with Mr. Gossett about his latest pursuit with Congressman Wrangell, which I think he's gonna tell you a little bit about, but I think it's very exciting. I'm glad that they are taking their public profile, the bully pulpit, and putting it to use to the benefit of young people everywhere, and I'm just here to say thank you.
So, Mr. Gossett, on behalf of the Los Angeles City Council, we just want to say thank you for your five decades, and we certainly look forward to working with you in the future on all of your endeavors.
Thank you so much, Councilman Parks. Thank you so much. It's amazing, you know, how fast the time went, but I have been doing my thing since I was 16 years old, so I've seen history in my lifetime. I've seen Jackie Robinson, and Dr. King, and McEvers. I've seen things change. We've done it quite rapidly. If you take it and put it in a time capsule and open it up 1,000 years from now, so people will think it's kind of rapid, but we're living in the present, and it's not fast enough. And I know what you understand. It occurred to me that, through my foundation, that perhaps I can make suggestions. And one suggestion I've given to Charlie Wrangell, who's going to have it in Congress, both the House of Representatives and the Senate, to this year, celebrate the responsible African-American father. Because in the headlines today, the irresponsible man is getting the headlines, and there were more responsible men in the United States than are irresponsible, and to make this Father's Day a special tribute to them. The second thing is, I see a spiritual positive growth happening in this country, both in Congress and here. And I'm now a citizen of Los Angeles, and Los Angeles, I think, is on the brink, be you Democrat or Republican, an underlying common spiritual process of making this city the number-one model diverse city of America, so the other cities can copy. So my suggestion is to have a celebration from every neighborhood, and every diverse culture, and celebrate it this year, Los Angeles, as the diamond diverse city of America, and have the rest of the cities copy, and maybe have something in Griffith Park for everybody to contribute, and take the headlines away from the gangs. Thank you so much for your...
Thank you, and speaking of Griffith Park, the council member for Griffith Park would like to add his good wishes, Tom Labange.
Lou Gossett, thank you for your words. There is a spirit, if we all let the spirit get to us, and I would love to join with you and Mr. Parks, who has such history here in Los Angeles, Jan Perry, and all of us in this city, anything to bring people together and to understand, this is an amazing place that was founded 228 years ago, when 44 people walked nine miles from the Mission San Gabriel to the banks of the Los Angeles River to form the Pueblo, and this town has grown. I'm proud that you're in here. I'm proud that you are engaged in community, and the last time we had a chance to visit was with the late great Johnny Grant on kicking off the very important program for the Salvation Army, which they do every year. You're a special man, and we're honored to have you here in our chambers, and to hear the words, and look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. Honored to have you here, Mr. Gossett Jr. Thank you. Next, we'd like to recognize a council member from the 1st District, a graduate of a campus to the west of here, for a special presentation. Mr. Clerk, will you go through First Order Business as he approaches the podium?
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Reyes moves, and Mr. Wesson seconds. Those are approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
And Mr. Wezar moves, and Mr. Labange seconds. Without objection, those are approved as well, and we'll run through the agenda after Mr. Reyes's presentation.
I noticed our council president could not say the three letters, UCLA.
No, no.
The campus...
I don't know about that UCLA education. How about the fourth? And I love UCLA. I went to elementary school there.
Elementary school, I like that. So, I'd like to welcome our fellow Bruins from the council, so I know we have with us Wendy Gruel, I believe, Jack Weiss, and who else is a fellow Bruin here? Okay, come on up, Councilman Wezar, but as a Berkeley undergrad, I know you're torn. But colleagues, good morning. It's my distinct honor and privilege to honor Dr. Frank Gilliam, the new dean for the UCLA School of Public Affairs. His most, he most recently served as the first-ever associate vice chancellor, community partnerships in the University of California System, 2002-2008. It's in that capacity I had the honor of meeting him. He spoke of programs and projects that would connect UCLA closer to the urban fabric of our great city, and indeed promoted, and was instrumental in creating a whole layer of services, academic, social, that allowed our communities to improve with the assistance and resources from UCLA. So for that, I thank you, Dr. Gilliam. He was the founding director of the Center for Communications and Community at the University of California, Los Angeles. In addition, he taught with former Vice President Al Gore at Columbia University, Fisk University, and Middle Tennessee State University. He's a senior fellow at the Frameworks Institute, and was a visiting scholar at Brandeis University. He received his BA from Drake University, and his PhD from the University of Iowa. What about universities there? His research focuses on strategic communications, public policy, electoral politics, and racial and ethnic politics. He's the author of The Father to Go: Reading and Cases in African-American Politics. Dr. Gilliam has also published in American Political Science Review, American Journal of Political Science, Social Policy Report, Urban Affairs Review, Journal of Politics, and many other prestigious academic journals. Dr. Gilliam has served on the editorial boards of the American Journal of Political Science, Political Research Quarterly. In addition, the National Science Foundation appointed him to the Committee of Visitors, Committee of Visitors. Dr. Gilliam is also very active in the community. He serves on several local and national boards, including Sempra Energy L.A., United Way of Greater Los Angeles, the National Center for Child Traumatic Stress, and Institute for Community Peace. I look forward to working with you, Dr. Gilliam, as alumnus of the school, back when it was considered the School of Architecture and Urban Planning, with Dr. Javi Perloff, one of the cornerstones in planning discipline. I look forward to the changes, and especially in these next few years, in this economy, in the city, in this country, how we embrace public policy, how we weave together this notion of density income, the many dollars that exist in our communities, and how we get to another level of economic stimulation. With your guidance, and working with UCLA, and, yes, USC, and Cal State, and Occidental, and all the great universities of Southern California, we will stimulate an upturn change, an optimistic future for everyone. So thank you, Dr. Gilliam, and I want to invite my colleagues for a few words, and then we'll present this resolution to Dr. Frank Gilliam.
How's my Gruel?
Thank you, and I'm so pleased us to stand here with Dr. Gilliam this morning. We were upstairs, and the students, I think, are off to their meetings for the School of Public Policies efforts, and we're talking today about greening Los Angeles and green building. Dr. Gilliam is one of those unique individuals who comes to this position with so much experience, not only your education, but other experiences that you have had, and in the community. And we had a chance to sit down just a month or so ago and talk about how we could make Los Angeles better, and how the university and Los Angeles, the city of Los Angeles could work together. And I think we could have spent hours there, Dr. Gilliam, talking about that, and the partnership that is so important. And so I'm glad that my colleague, Mr. Reyes, is acknowledging you today and honoring you, and we look forward to many years of you as the dean of this wonderful School of Public Policy at UCLA, and we know that your imprint, as it has been, on so many other aspects of your life, will be the same here at the University of... Science, Political Research Quarterly. In addition, the National Science Foundation appointed him to the Committee of Visitors, Committee of Visitors. Dr. Gilliam is also very active in the community. He serves on several local and national boards, including Sempra Energy L.A., United Way of Greater Los Angeles, the National Center for Child Traumatic Stress, and Institute for Community Peace. I look forward to working with you, Dr. Gilliam, as alumnus of the school back when it was considered the School of Architecture and Urban Planning, with Dr. Javi Perloff, one of the cornerstones in planning discipline. I look forward to the changes, and especially in these next few years in this economy, in the city, in this country, how we embrace public policy, how we weave together this notion of density income, the many dollars that exist in our communities, and how we get to another level of economic stimulating. With your guidance and working with UCLA and, yes, USC and Cal State and Occidental and all the great universities of Southern California, we will stimulate an upturn change, an optimistic future for everyone. So thank you, Dr. Gilliam. And I want to invite my colleagues for a few words, and then we'll present this resolution to Dr. Frank Gilliam.
Councilor Gruhl.
Thank you. And I'm so pleased, as to stand here with Dr. Gilliam this morning. We were upstairs, and the students, I think, are off to their meetings for the School of Public Policies efforts. And we're talking today about greening Los Angeles and green building. Dr. Gilliam is one of those unique individuals who comes to this position with so much experience, not only your education, but other experiences that you have had and in the community. And we had a chance to sit down just a month or so ago and talk about how we could make Los Angeles better and how the university and Los Angeles, the city of Los Angeles, could work together. And I think we could have spent hours there, Dr. Gilliam, talking about that and the partnership that is so important. And so I'm glad that my colleague, Mr. Reyes, is acknowledging you today and honoring you. And we look forward to many years of you as the dean of this wonderful School of Public Policy at UCLA. And we know that your imprint, as it has been on so many other aspects of your life, will be the same here at the University of California, at Los Angeles. So welcome again to here. And we're going to deal with that traffic issue on coming down Beverly today, this morning. So thank you very much, and congratulations.
Councilor Jose, we saw it.
Thank you very much. Well, Dean, I attended law school at UCLA, and I could honestly say that a lot of what I learned there, not only in terms of the actual academics, but what was ingrained in me about giving back to my community, supporting Los Angeles, really affected my decision to get into public service. And that's the type of impact that we know that UCLA has on a number of students and alumni. So I want to first congratulate you and welcome you. And we know how important it is to make sure that we link what our academic institutions are doing with practical solutions. And here we have someone who's going to lead the area in public affairs, so that we work closely with this department and ensure that as Los Angeles moves forward, we are provided and work with researchers that's authored to make the best decisions possible for all Angelinos. So congratulations. You have a profound background. We're really happy that you've gotten this position. And also, if I'm correct, you're one of the first African-American deans to be at this position. They see, we're excited. Whenever the computer gets excited, we do that. And that is historical in these times as well. So thank you so much for being here today, and congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. And if I can just add my good wishes. I think there are five of us. Mr. Weiss is excused today, but I went to elementary school at UCLA, so I'm very proud, Mr. Reyes, to say that. It was my first school and still my best one. And congratulations. I've hired a number of folks from your program who have been legislative deputies and extraordinary people, and we're very proud to have a planner from UCLA on this council, too, with Mr. Reyes. So congratulations.
I give you Dr. Frank Gilliam.
Thank you. Councilmember Reyes, Gruhl, we saw it. Thank you so much for having me here. Councilmember Garcetti, my children are alums of your elementary school, so you're a Bruin at heart. But I should say, of course, that there are enough issues for all of us to tackle here in the city. The School of Public Affairs is renewing its commitment to being involved in Los Angeles, to being a robust stakeholder in the city, to tying the knowledge at the university to the knowledge in the community, to work on important problems and issues that confront us. There is no one stakeholder that can do it alone. It's not the city government. It's not the county government. It's not a foundation or a university that's going to require all of us pulling on the rope to make a change in our community. So I appreciate this commendation today. We're thrilled that our graduate students are here in this building, talking about Green L.A. with council members and policymakers. It is this kind of engagement that is important to their educational experience, and it is this kind of engagement that is important to the School of Public Affairs at UCLA. So we are here and stand ready as partners with you. And please feel free to call on us. Our students are wonderful. We have to get a few more UCLA interns here, but we will work on that. So thank you very much.
Thank you. We have two other council members who'd like to add their good wishes. Mr. Alacon.
I just want to say for all those sports fans in Channel 35 land who are saying, "That's what happened to Frank Gilliam." No, this isn't the Frank Gilliam, the famous football player, but this is his son. And I just want to say that it is nice to see that the son is having as much success in academia as his father did on the field. And we are very proud to have you in Los Angeles. Your father made sure that your head was screwed on right. We have a lot of work to do. As was said by previous speakers, we certainly have a new day. That's clear to the world. But we have a lot of work to do, and you're doing it. And I want to commend you. I also want to ask you to work with Rocky Delgado on our program in McClay. I'm putting you on the spot in public, because yesterday we announced his program with Ramon Cortinas, the superintendent of schools at McClay Middle School, to teach greening, environmental awareness, and architecture and design to his students, to get them on a track to become specialists. I was speaking with your graduate students. That's exactly what they want to do, and I think there's a great partnership waiting to happen at McClay Middle School with UCLA. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rosenthal.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to say we bumped into each other in the halls there about public affairs and UCLA. I want you to create television product that goes on that channel that we've created here, that is a citywide channel. The trouble with our great city is local media do a terrible job of informing, educating, and connecting people to the issues, especially television. It's all bleed if it leads, confrontation. People don't know the basic information in the democracy, which is critical for us to be empowered voters. So the challenge is for UCLA, which is a great school, to create the product in public affairs that connects people to the democracy and the issues. We have a channel that it will go on citywide in 750,000 households, so that you can take what you create there and give it as a public service to the people, who then can be more empowered in dealing with the democracy. So I love what you guys do, and I look forward to it going on our channel. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I do want to take one moment, Council President, to recognize and thank Keith Parker, who has been one of the stewards and allowed the kind of leadership where our new chancellor Block, relatively new, has made a tremendous impact in this city, if not in the state. And I believe Keith Parker is one of the reasons why we can continue to develop these relationships. So thank you, Mr. Parker, for everything you do as well. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you very much. We can run through the agenda, and then Mr. Alacon will be our next presenter. First items, please.
On the regular agenda, items 1 through 6 are street lighting district ordinances, notice for public hearing.
Okay. We do not have any cards on those, so we will open and close the hearings. Anybody wishing to call 1 through 6 special from the council? If not, please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items 7 through 11 are items to which public hearings have been held.
Okay. Anybody wishing to call items 7 through 11 special? 7 through 11? If not, let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved as well. Next items, please.
Items 12 through 17 are items to which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, we have a card on number 12. We'll call that special for a card from the public. We'll open and close the other public hearings. Anybody wishing to call 13 through 17 special? Seeing none, let's go ahead and open the roll and the balance. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. If we can call the roll for the special meeting, please.
Alacon, Cardenas, Gruhl, Haun, Weisar, LaBange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Smith, Westen, Sin, Garcetti, 12 members. President.
Okay, and we have an amendment on 18, which we'll accept as a friendly amendment if there are no objections. Anybody wishing to call 18 through 20 special? We do not have cards, so we'll open and close the public hearings. Seeing none, let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved, and we will recess, sorry, adjourn the special meeting since it's on, go back to the regular meeting, and recognize the council member from the Seventh District, who is joined by our city attorney, Richard Alacon, and Rocky Delgado.
Good morning, colleagues. It isn't often that one politician recognizes another politician, but in this case, I just couldn't not recognize Rocky Delgado for a special program that he has been working on for a number of years. As you know, I've followed Councilmember Weston's lead, where he focuses on adopting animals, and I focused on child safety. So we've tried to identify organizations that are worthy of promoting child safety. And I think we have a very special group this time, headed up by our city attorney. Initiated by the city attorney's office is the Lead Toy Exchange Program that helps reduce the number of toys with high lead levels owned by our local children. There are no safe levels of lead in toys. Since 1987, lead has been listed on the governor's list of chemicals that can cause reproductive harm and birth defects, and since 1992, has been on the list of chemicals known to cause cancer. Exposure to lead occurs chiefly from ingestion, such as eating or putting objects into the mouth, like my daughter Camila does all the time, putting young kids at particular risk. Lead impacts include birth defects, learning disabilities, hearing loss, reduced attention span, and behavioral abnormalities. Teenagers can also suffer adverse effects, including brain damage, kidney damage, hearing loss, and impaired growth. The kinds of toys that can lead to it include toys, costume jewelry, ceramic tea playsets, backpacks, lunchboxes, Halloween costumes, and pajamas. Mr. President, I dare say that I might want to test that kitty to your right, my left. And these are the...
And LaBange, too.
These are the folks to do it. These are the folks to do it. And that's exactly what they do. So we definitely want to say thank you to this group that is, of course, spearheaded by the city attorney. Specifically, they've been hosting events throughout the city where they would test toys for lead. This past year, they've conducted multiple toy testing days, including one right before Christmas. And just last weekend, they hosted lead toy testing at four locations in South, Westside, Valley, and Central L.A. And if a toy is found to contain lead, it can be exchanged for a $25 American Express gift card. If you have two toys that have lead in them, you can get two gift cards, but that's it, okay? So give the other toys to a friend to get their $25 gift card. Oh, I wasn't supposed to say that. Okay, I'll just say that with a wink and a nod. But the city attorney's office, with the help of our Harvard police, our Port Police, makes sure that these toys are disposed of effectively. But I want to let the city attorney tell you a little bit more about this program. As I said, politicians don't honor politicians unless we really have to. And I really have to in this case, because particularly with little Camila, who's one years old now, and sticking everything she gets her hands on in her mouth, I'm particularly sensitive to this issue and appreciate the work of all these people. Our city attorney, Rocky Delgado.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Thank you for recognizing the whole team here, really. It's not for me, but for the whole team. Look, lead is a poison, it's a toxin, and it's one of those things that is a lot more pervasive in our society than we know. Several years back, we began a campaign against lead in all things. We brought lawsuits against soda manufacturers who had lead in the labels on their Coke bottles, soda bottles. We brought actions against those who had lead in acid turf. We brought actions against those who had lead in their candy. And as the council member pointed out, we also brought an action just over a year ago against 17 manufacturers and distributors and retailers of toys, because lead was appearing in toys that our children were putting in their mouths and ingesting lead. Lead is one of those poisons that there is no anecdote for. The council member pointed out some of the things that it does to our kids, but let me just give you a bottom line on it. If our children ingest lead, they will lose IQ points, and we can do nothing about it. So the most important thing we can do is make sure that our kids do not interact with lead at all. I'm proud to say that the group behind me worked really hard to get that message out to our parents and to our kids about the fact that we have to prevent lead from getting into the lives of our children. I'll just give you one quick story. Last Saturday, at one of the testing sites, we had a rattle that had 10,000 parts per million of lead in it. 10,000 parts. The allowable standard for the highest level is 600 parts per million, so 10,000 parts per million in that rattle that had lead in it. The most disturbing thing was, I picked it up, and it had teeth marks all over it. So one of our children was already exposed to lead that had 10,000 parts per million. This is the story that we're dealing with on a daily basis in our city, and the folks here behind me are fighting hard to keep our kids safe. And so I'd now like to bring up, to just say a few remarks, one of the stalwarts of the message against lead in our society. She runs a nonprofit that is out there every day, educating the public about our efforts and about her own efforts to prevent lead from getting into things like toys and paint and everything else. She works tirelessly. I don't think she slept. She just told me she flew back in from DC. But she's here today to help spread the word about lead and its perils to our community. So without further ado, I'd like to bring up our great partner in this effort, Linda Kite.
So as Rocky Delgado just said, I'm Linda Kite with the Healthy Homes Collaborative, emphasis on homes. We actually really focus on lead in housing the most. So an assistant city attorney, Patty Bilgan, who's a supervisor of the Environmental Justice Program, came to me and said, "What do you think about setting up some toy testing events? And, you know, we can really do this." And I thought, "Ugh." But in reality, it was a learning lesson for me, because what I saw, and this is my own bias, I thought, you know, this is kind of a more middle-class issue. This isn't really hitting the low-income communities of color that I work to serve. What I saw at these toy testing events were señoras bringing in bagfuls of toys. And even though they were limited to just two gift cards, they didn't care. They said, "Test them all, get rid of them. I don't want my children exposed." So I learned a lot from this process. I think what's critical to remember, and it's on my mind today, because we're hearing about this gang and the funding and whatnot, whatever's going on with the city comptroller's office, you know, one of the causes of violence is lead poisoning. And there are longitudinal studies, 30 years, where we have followed children from their initial exposure all the way 30 years into the future, and there is 100% correlation with high blood lead levels and violence. This isn't just scientific statistical manipulation. This is real. And so if we're really trying to get at the root causes of some of our most problematic social ills, we need to look at lead poisoning. It's something that is entirely preventable, and when you're putting lead in toys and candy and soda and whatnot, those are nonessential uses of lead. And we can actually prevent this 100%. I have the honor of serving at a federal advisory committee to the Center for Disease Control on Lead Poisoning Prevention. And I can tell you that we are working at that level to look at the international implications of this, because it is about a global economy and stuff that gets imported and our lack of control. So we are doing what we can, but these kind of partnerships are actually what bring it home into the neighborhoods where folks are the most impacted in our city. So thank you.
You know, when I was a kid, they were building track homes across the street, and my cousin Steve and I used to go play in those construction sites. And when they would put the electrical boxes in, they would have these little round, like nickels, and we used to play with them. Well, those things are almost pure lead. And so if any of you are wondering, that might explain my condition today, but seriously...
You're on fire today, Mr. Alacon.
Tom also clearly played with those nickels.
You're on fire today. We have another council member wants to add his good wishes? Would you like to hear from him? And it's not Mr. LaBange.
No, I'd like to hear from all of them. But honestly, it does give you a concern. And if we couldn't save the last generation, let's work to save the next generation. But with that, I do have these presentations. Did you want the council members...
Just, yeah. Mr. Weisar, real quick, and then...
Thank you very much. And first, I want to thank our city attorney, Rocky Delgado. You, when I was on the school board, you always reached out to work on programs to help our young people in terms of public safety. So thank you so much. You've been doing so much for public safety for our young people. And secondly, Linda Kite, when I was a young intern at the Legal Aid Foundation of Los Angeles, you were out there even then, making sure that the housing projects in Bull Heights got its fair share of dollars to make sure we took out lead from some of those areas there. And so thank you for the work you did. Because of your work, the largest housing project in Bull Heights is now safe, thanks to your hard work. I remember you driving up in your VW bus, and people would wonder, "Who's this woman coming out from out of our neighborhood to do this?" And you earned their trust and respect from the grassroots level up, and you made that possible. So thank you so much, and especially on an issue like this, where it disproportionately impacts low-income people. Just because you're from low income, you're going to be more exposed to this than if you were not. So this is something that we've got to go out, this is a good thing for us to reach out, make sure we protect those and help those who need the help. Thank you so much for your work on this.
Thank you. And from Mr. LaBange.
Yeah, thank you very much. And Alacon, always, you have a way to bring the right focus on things when it concerns safety, so I congratulate you on that. And Rocky, I congratulate you, uh, because you've always, from when I first met you in the mayor's office as the deputy mayor for economic development, you were trying to put things together. And I know I just met somebody recently who told me a story about you, how you helped them at a moment's notice in that area of economic development. In your years as a city attorney, you've had a big playbook, uh, that called for the health and safety for young people and children. So, I just want to thank you. And to all that stand behind you, it, it's gratifying each day that out there in this city of 4 million people, there's individuals like yourself who go on the extra effort to create a change for a better life. So, thank you for what you do for all the people of Los Angeles. Thank you, Richard.
Thank you. Mr. Alacan.
So, with that, let me present first to the city attorney's office, uh, this certificate of recognition, uh, to the, uh, lead toy exchange program. Uh, the recipient will be, uh, Patricia Bilgen, Assistant, uh, City Attorney, uh, with the Environmental Justice Unit. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
And of course, uh, our own Rocky Delgado, he's not even running for office, so we're not doing this as a ploy. We just want to recognize good work.
(inaudible).
Patricia, this is also for you personally. Thank you so much. And, uh, Linda Kite, of course, for the tremendous advocacy that she's had over the years, uh, particularly in, in my own council district with Pacoima Beautiful. We want to thank you for the work that you do.
Thank you.
Uh, day in and day out, not just in this area, but in all the work that you do. Uh, also with the Healthy Homes Collaborative is program manager, Vicky Paulus. And, uh, an organization that we've done quite a bit of work with on these presentations, uh, is Physicians for Social Responsibility. Uh, receiving that reward is Vicky?
Again?
Oh, you again, okay. And, uh, Bram Klein from the Inspect the Toy Program. Uh, they do the hard work of checking the toys, and so, we, we greatly appreciate what they do. And, and if there's any way we can help expand services, uh, please count on me and the seventh council district, and I hope the rest of my colleagues elsewhere.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Now, I also mentioned our port police, uh, our hazardous materials unit in particular, they are the ones that are responsible to, uh, get rid of these hazardous toys, so we want to thank them for their part in this, uh, program. Thank you so much. The Korean Town Immigrant Worker Alliance, Jan Wu Nam is present. We want to thank them. Uh, they play a critical role in the success of this program. And the Center for Environmental Health. Patty will take that. And finally, Thermo Fisher.
Let me tell ya, if there's anything about building relationships for 17 years doing this work, I was able to get this corporation to ship me nitons overnight for Saturday delivery at the last minute when we ran short. So, thank you, Thermo Fisher.
I don't know what nitons are, but I'm sure glad they sent them. And that has to do with those lead nickel things.
It's a, it's a portable x-ray device that tests, tests the toys in the home.
Thank you very much. And congratulations, everybody. Thank you very much for the presentation. Uh, we'll next go to council member Tom LaBange from the fourth district for the Jim Murray Memorial Foundation and Scholars. After that, we will be honoring the Juvenile Intervention and Prevention Program.
(inaudible) scholars that are here today.
Super. And we're gonna call you to speak.
Yes, I can.
Okay, good. Yes, good thing. Thank you very much, Mr. President. You know, for many, many years in this great city of ours, we would wake up every day and look at the Los Angeles Times, and Jim Murray would write a column about sports. I don't think there's a better sports writer in the history of all of the American newspapers than Jim Murray. Uh, Jim Murray started in the Los Angeles Times in 1961, and over those many years, won four Pulitzer Prizes. Uh, he was a very, very skilled man in, in, in taking words and putting words together in ways that nobody did in describing great sporting events. He was a great supporter of the Olympic Games in Los Angeles, which this year we celebrate the 25th anniversary. He was a great supporter of our sports teams, but also to call them, uh, as he really saw them. Uh, but in his death in 1998, a foundation was formed, a foundation to do what Jim believed in, helping others in the world of sports. The Jim Murray Memorial Foundation began in late 1998 as a foundation named in the honor of sports journalist Jim Murray. The foundation established an annual sports essay competition in which second and third year students pursuing their undergraduate work in journalism, uh, 28 schools competed for scholarships awards and had their entries judged by a panel of national journalists. In the Los Angeles area, Cal State University Northridge, UCLA and USC all have field entries every year. The funds for the Murray scholars are raised throughout the year, and prizes are awarded at the foundation's annual event. And we just had it here on the, in October with the 10th annual event. Murray scholars awards are funded in part by a, a five-for-five patron grant, donations from generous sponsors that guarantee funding for one Murray scholar each of the five years. Since its founding, the Jim Murray Memorial Scholars have, uh, programs have aided in education and development to 63 young honorees, and many of them have gone on to write in national magazines, uh, national television, uh, in sports, whether it's CNN, the Associated Press, or Sports Illustrated, or the Washington Post. But today, we wanted to bring everybody together here to recognize 10 years and salute the Jim Murray Memorial Foundation for all their work, because it is, uh, a legacy to someone. And Linda McCoy Murray is right here, uh, Jim's late, great wife. And I just want to tell you, Linda, what you have done with this is carry a legacy of a great man. I could tell you the columns that I remember, Jim, The Ballad of Willie D about Willie Davis, the great Dodger baseball player. And my favorite is about, uh, The Right Corner, which is about my high schoolmate, Mike Haynes, and many, many, many columns that Jim had wrote and excited all of us to believe in, in sports and question sports, and also to, uh, to, to, to celebrate sports. So, on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, I want to send this resolution signed by all my colleagues, uh, President, Mr. Garcetti, and the mayor of Los Angeles, Mr. Vieragosa, and all of the comptroller, Mr., uh, Ms. Chick, as well as Mr. Delgado. So, we thank you. Let's give a big hand for the Murray Foundation Scholars. And Linda, before I make a presentation, I would like to ask for you to say a few words.
Um, Mr. President and council members, and especially Tom and your staff, um, just a wonderful honor to be here. I, I think about all the people who were subjects of Jim's columns, and they would say it was their Oscar. And this today is our Oscar, and I, I really, really do appreciate it. You know, when Jim first came to Los Angeles, um, he took a train from Hartford, Connecticut, 65 years ago, and when he arrived, he was, he, he had no idea where City Hall was. He had no idea. Of course, I couldn't find City Hall today either, so, nothing changes. Uh, he had no idea where Figaroa Street was, um, and he went in to see Jim Richardson at the, um, old LA Examiner. And he said, "Well, you don't know where any of our landmarks are, but can you write?" And Jim said, "Oh, yes, Mr. Richardson, I can write like an SOB." And he hired him. But, uh, he knew Jim was a newspaper man the minute he asked for an advance in his salary. So, after 37 years, uh, Jim wrote over 10,000 columns, uh, for the Los Angeles Times and the syndication, and won his Pulitzer Prize in 1990. He was an institution in Los Angeles, and through his syndication was certainly an institution around the country as well as around the world. And he was a gentleman and a gentle man. And, you know, the one thing that, uh, prompted me to start the foundation, I would say, "Oh, this fabulous column again today, this is just great." He says, "Oh, sweetheart, let me tell you something. I won't be out of here six months," and they'll be saying, "Jim who?" And I said to myself, a couple of months after he passed away, "I can't allow that to happen." Hence, we started, uh, the Jim Murray Memorial Foundation, and to date, we have 63 Murray Scholars across the nation who have received $5,000 scholarship to, uh, further their education in journalism. And, um, Tom, as you know, we have today, I have three board members with me today, and I'd like to introduce them. Um, my son, Bill McCoy, who is vice president of the board.
Thank you.
And Helene Cohen. And Arash Markazi, who has a dual role. He's our first Murray scholar to join the Board of Directors of the Jim Murray Memorial Foundation. And he is also one of our Murray Scholars from USC, and I'll turn that, and, and, oh, and then our, would you like to introduce? And then our, um, other Murray Scholars, we have Ben Malcolmson from USC. And Dallas Woodburn, who is also at USC.
This is great, Linda. I just want to let you know, I, I knew your husband from my days in the Coliseum, and late in the fourth quarter, all the sports writers would walk down the long stairs at Tunnel Six, onto the field. Dennis Zine would be up in the corner in his police uniform at Tunnel Eight. All the sports writers would come down, and Jim would sit in the end zone and watch the last four minutes of the game. And I had opportunities to visit with him, and he truly was a remarkable man. To realize, members, he wrote his column every day, every day, you know? Jack Smith, his colleague, wrote every day. Uh, and it was a different era. These were very creative men. Jim was a very creative man. These are very creative people. We're proud of your scholars. We're gonna honor them in the back room with their own individual commendations. So, congratulations to the Jim Murray Foundation, and to you, Linda. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. LaBange. And a quick introduction by Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, President. Today is Ablamos Azcina Day. We have guests here who are essentially providing weekly reviews of current Spanish and English movies while celebrating the role of Latino directors. Ablamos Azcina is premiering its 21st consecutive television season at Azteca America Network this Sunday, February 28th. So, invite you all to, uh, invite all of our viewers to make sure to catch Ablamos Azcina. With us, we have Jorge Ortega of Mega TV, Jorge Elias of the Hollywood Channel, Eduardo Blancas, All Air News, Jorge Jair, Herente General Azteca America, Jaime Aymerich, and Gema del Toro de Ablamos Azcina, Iran Daniel of Azteca America. And I want to thank you for being here. Uh, just wave and let folks know who you are, and I appreciate your presence and all the good work in celebrating this great culture. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the introduction, Mr. Reyes. And our next presentation will be by Mr. Garcetti.
Yeah, we're gonna do juvenile intervention prevention. Yeah, sorry. We're gonna, um, do a presentation, um, on the Juvenile Intervention Prevention Program next, and I know Mr. Reyes is gonna come forward in just one second for the Business Improvement District. Um, thank you, Madam President. And so often, we hear stories of what goes wrong in our town. Um, as Mr. Lou Gossett Jr. just said before, we only hear about the bad actors, and we don't hear about all the folks that are way outnumbering them, doing the good things, uh, in our city. But we are here to celebrate, uh, young people and their supporters here today in, in city council, to acknowledge an incredibly positive program that demonstrates what happens when we invest in our young people here in Los Angeles, and when the school district and the city come together, uh, to tell young people that they matter, that we care about them, and that we're gonna help set them on a path to success. I present to you today a program called Juvenile Intervention and Prevention Program, or JIP for short, that has grown organically from caring people in a community who have worked across agencies and all those bureaucratic hurdles, to bring an incredible model together for helping our young people stay on the right path or turn their lives around if they have already strayed. The Juvenile Intervention and Prevention Program, JIP, was instituted in the fall of 2006, and it's an alliance between the Los Angeles Unified School District, District Four, and also the Los Angeles Police Department Rampart Division. And we're very pleased to have Captain Egan here today as well. The Rampart Police Activities League, and Families and Schools, and the Charter College of Education at California State University, Los Angeles. Now, if you go to Belmont on one of the weekends, as much of the community does, because we're still too park poor in that area, but increasingly through Mr. Reyes's good efforts and some new parks that have been able to open up on the other side of Belmont, we have more green space, but folks use that field. And sometimes you'll see these drill instructors barking orders at the kids there, um, teaching them, and for those of us who have served in the military, it kind of gives us shudders because it reminds us of those drill sergeants that we all had. But you see the kids learning the discipline and the focus, that is one part of the program. But then, we also see the parents and the young people who then, uh, get a host of skills to learn how to be contributing members of our great, great city here. It's a comprehensive whole-child program that really provides strategies to address the risk factors in multiple domains, self, school, family and community. And students are selected for participation by deans, administrators and counselors of the various feeder schools that comprise the Belmont High School community, um, as well as by student attendance review boards, the city attorney's office, and the Department of Children and Family Services. So, these students are assigned to a program as an alternative to suspension. And, you know, we, we give them that carrot here, and in doing that, they can set their life in a different path to positive behavior policy under LAUSD, uh, discipline policy. They're also referred by the juvenile court for truancy and other misdemeanors. So, this is implemented over 18 weeks on Saturdays. Over 550 students from, and families from over 50 different LAUSD schools have participated in the last two and a half years. And when it comes to evaluating how successful the program has been, the numbers don't lie. Listen to this. A 46% increase in attendance compared to the prior pre-intervention period. A 74% reduction in suspensions for disruptive defiant behavior versus the prior period. A 25 to 30% higher reading and math scores from pre to post-test, and 127% increase in students feeling normal from pre to post per the Beck Depression Inventory. And perhaps that's the, the strongest indicator of all, because it's the student sense of self-worth that is the most important motivator for them to get back on track. It's been recognized by LAUSD, uh, Board of Education, got an award from the California Peace Officers Association, and is a recent recipient of the AT&amp;T Aspire Grant, the only LAUSD school or program to be awarded this grant. And most recently, they are named as a subcontractor in the city, um, Gang Reduction and Youth Development Program under the mayor's office. Officer Covington and our friend, Assistant Principal Stephen Kaufman, who are here, um, are incredible leaders of this program. And they've presented this, uh, program to 39th Annual Juvenile Court Community and Alternative School Administrators of California Conference, that's a very short-named conference, and the 20th Annual National Dropout Prevention Network Conference. So, I'm so proud and pleased that for Mr. Reyes's area, for my own area, probably captured some people in Ms. Perry's, uh, area, um, that this, this net is the most positive form of bringing kids back into being on track and learning what they are about. And I want to introduce and thank Stephen Kaufman, Assistant Principal of Belmont High School, and JIP Director and Officer Larry Covington from the LAPD Rampart Division to say a few words. Let's give them a big round of applause as we present this award for their extraordinary efforts.
I first like to say, uh, I'd like to be able to take all credit for this, but I can't. What you see here is a true collaboration of a whole-child intervention. And I'd like to thank Mr. Garcetti for really believing in the whole-child intervention and being with us for the last two and a half years, coming out, talking with the parents, coming out and visiting the program, and really being a strong proponent of the whole-child intervention. Uh, as well as Mr. Reyes has come out and visited as well, thank you very much, and talked to the young people in the program. Uh, one thing that we've been able to do is really focus on the prevention piece of , uh, delinquency and dropout prevention in LAUSD and the community and the PICO Union. But really, the thanks really goes to all the people around me, because this is a true collaboration. We have the Police Activities League of Rampart who has stepped up and has provided the insurance and the community advocacy for this program to exist. All these officers here come out, a lot of them, we start out, just the officers and myself and a couple teachers volunteering our time on Saturdays. We've now garnered some funding to hire a full-time coordinator to provide oversight for the program. We have the LAUSD teachers, we have Mr. Vasquez, Ms. Vega, Ms. Curran, Ms. Matiel, who does the parenting component, because we all know that if you don't reach the parents, you're not gonna reach the kids. We have, um, just a host of people. We have Cal State interns from the Charter College of Education. They provide us clinical interns on Saturday that provides the psychosocial, emotional support for our students. We have Magic Hour Production, who, uh, at their own expense, has filmed us for the last year and a half for a full-length documentary, now in final production. and a half for a full-length documentary now in final production. We're looking forward to that coming out, Andrew Yex and Jen Lakin. And right now, I'd like to just turn this over to Captain Egan, because with his leadership in Rampart was really enabled us to really get this program off the ground. So I'm going to turn it over to Captain Egan. Thank you.
And just before the captain speaks, we've got certificates for the captain and all the participants to thank them individually.
Mr. Garcetti, before everyone leaves, Mr. Reyes has pushed his button to say a few words.
Absolutely. So I just wanted to show one of those certificates and give the first one to Captain Egan, but we'd love to hear from Mr. Reyes.
Thank you first, thank you, Council President, for your stewardship. I always repeat, what we tend to say is that we don't function as political boundaries, we function as neighborhoods. So I see many of you here who have been doing tremendous work, and with the coordination and cooperation of Councilman Garcetti, we can impact our youngsters the way you have. And for that, I thank you. Officer Covington, I met him before I became a council member, and I saw how active he was and the great spirit he brings to his role in impacting our community. And Captain Egan, thank you for everything you've done. There's a lot of sacrifice I've seen you go through, a lot of that you've given of yourself for our communities. And all of you are the unsung heroes who essentially don't get recognized the way you should, but for that young child, you have put an impression, a memory in them, and hopefully will carry them through as they go through their struggles in life. So for that, I thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Garcetti, Councilmember Reyes, and other members of the council. This is truly a great day for the Juvenile Intervention and Prevention Program. This holistic model typifies the type of partnership that we want to see, where we have community involvement, we have a public safety involvement, and we also have the educational involvement. But we wouldn't be here today were it not for the blood, sweat, and tears that two individuals have committed to this program for the last three years, and that's Mr. Stephen Kaufman, and that's Officer Larry Covington. Those two gentlemen, those two gentlemen are responsible for what occurred here. It was their vision to bring a program into this community that was so needing of such a program, with the primary focus on working with young people and keeping them out of trouble. And when you see these individuals, when they come in, and then you see them eighteen weeks later when they graduate, you cannot believe the changes that have taken place. And I have been touched so much by looking at them and looking at their parents and seeing how satisfied their parents are, learning skills, how to be better parents, and young people learning how to take responsibility for their own actions. And I can tell you right now, this is just the beginning for this program. It's only going to continue to grow and get better. So thank you very much for acknowledging it, and I look forward to seeing you in the future when you talk more about JIP.
Well, man, very few words, so I just want to leave with a statement.
Drop it, give me ten.
Give me ten, exactly. No, JIP was an ideal thought that, you know, became reality over the past three years. And we have worked hard with all the different collaborators and city organizations to get it where it is. So I would like to just leave by saying, let's take charge and move forward and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti. And our next presentation will be by Mr. Reyes. Thank you so much for all your support. Mr. Weston.
Madam President, I just wanted to know if this would be the appropriate time to announce that Jerry Vasquez from the CLA's office adopted Jesse, so we, our one-hundred percent adoption record is still intact.
Very good. I'm glad you defended your record.
Thank you, Council President. If I'd like to ask the, our guest from the Business Investment District of Chinatown to join us. It's my distinct honor and privilege to honor and celebrate the Chinatown Business Investment District for ten years outstanding work and dedication in the Chinatown community, the city of Los Angeles. The Chinatown Business Investment District is one of the largest BIDs in the city of Los Angeles. The BID works closely with our office, city agencies, including Los Angeles Police Department and the Fire Department, in improving the quality of life for business owners and residents. Recently, we have installed fifty benches, trash receptacles, new ornamental lights on Hill Street, planted new trees, repaired many sidewalks in Chinatown as part of the Chinatown Linkages Streetscape Project. So as we build out our goal line, I start linking our rail facilities with our bus lines. We want to improve the walkways, the experience of being on the sidewalks, it'd be a much more inviting place, and stimulate business, hopefully create jobs. The Chinatown BID is an integral partner in the Chinatown Linkages Streetscape Project by maintaining the new street furniture, changing just one of the many beautification projects that the BID participates in. They also fund our security. They have individuals in distinct colored shirts, on bikes, and assisting in the public safety. The daily services provided by the BID include trash pickup, graffiti removal, bike patrol, special events, improved security cleanliness, and the overall quality of life for businesses. Both Kim Benjamin and George Yu have been active members of the Chinatown Committee for many years. Kim is our current president of the Chinatown BID Board, as well as president of Historic, Cultural, and Neighborhood Council, and a member of our Chinatown Community Advisory Committee. George Yu has been our executive director of the Chinatown BID for quite a few years, has been instrumental in the daily operation of the BID. The Chinatown BID has also been active participants in community cleanups, annual Chinatown events like the Autumn Moon Festival, the Golden Dragon Parade, and Festival. Kim and George, your service to the Chinatown community has touched the lives of many business owners and residents. I want to thank you for your hard work, and I'd like to present the certificate to the Chinatown BID, for all's acknowledged, Scott Lee, Nancy Yee, Marshall Liu, Jason Fujimoto, Jean Chan, Mei Zhang, and the rest of Chinatown BID, who have given of themselves to make sure we can make Chinatown a much greater place to visit, a tourist attraction, and a landmark for a great city. And with that, we have these certificates. I'd like to invite George Yu and/or Kim Benjamin to come onto the microphone.
Thank you, councilmen. It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you for this honor. On behalf of the Business Improvement District, we are the first tenured certified district of its kind in the state of California. But it's easy to say I'm the president, it's easy to say that we actually do the hard work. Volunteer organizations are really done by the people on the ground. We get to go to meetings, we get to give our advice, and we get to go home and do our normal jobs. We all volunteer very hard. Marshall is our design chair, Jean Chan is basically the eyes and ears on the ground with Mei Zhang, who supports George, but all of this really is here for George Yu, as I see it. George Yu is the executive director of the BID, and he has a job that in large part is not, well, it's thankless at times. He gets everybody's complaints all the time. I'm certain you hear about it yourself in your own positions. I'm here to honor George. The councilman is kind enough to honor George. George is the origination of the Business Improvement District. It's its lifeblood. He basically leaves us every day. He spends ten hours to twelve hours doing his job, six days a week, and gets bothered on Sundays to boot. I just want to say thank you for this opportunity, to say thank you to George for your leadership, your ongoing dedication to this community, for all the hard work you do, the work we see, and all the work we don't see.
Councilmembers, thank you very much for this honor, and we appreciate all the work that we do together, and we'll continue to do so. Councilman.
Before you end today, or Mr. Reyes, Mr. Labons would like to say a few words.
Mr. Reyes, thanks for your leadership in Chinatown. We're a city of great neighborhoods, and we just were together on a Saturday with the recognition for historic neighborhoods, Asian Pacific communities. I just wanted to call out one guy, number sixty-seven, is that right, Scott? Sixty-seven from John Marshall High, two-time All-Northland League guard, offensive defense, Scott Lee. Give Scott a big hand there, ball.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Reyes, thank you, Mr. Labon.
And just in conclusion, all this work happens, but you need to have great staff, great support in the office, and I want to thank Mike Fong for his great work and his involvement, and as well as Susan, who was a previous deputy, and I thank you for your hard work. So again, thank you very much, and let's step on over here for the pictures. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. And that marks the end of our presentations for today, and then we will go directly to public comment. First speaker will be Fabiola Wright. Is Fabiola Wright present? And after Ms. Wright will be Richard Kearns.
Good morning. My name is Fabiola Wright. I am here before you for the second time to request the city council to bring case number DIR 2008 1162 VSA before you for the following reasons. Allowing property owners in Los Angeles to build on zero property lines by right without requiring them to file for entitlements, adjustments, reduction of yard setbacks, reduction of open space without filing the master land use permit application, notifying the surrounding neighbors, and holding a public meeting will have a severe negative impact in the city of Los Angeles. The city council needs to be aware how the citizens are treated by government agencies. Without this knowledge, the city council is unable to protect citizens' rights and correct the problems. This matter involves intentional misrepresentations, deceit, trickery towards a citizen. For over one year and a half, government agencies have intentionally acted in violation of the rule of ethics and the rule of law enacted by the city to protect the rights of citizens. The government agencies were informed of the violations at the beginning, and instead of fixing the violations, they opted to go on the side of the owners who violated the law. Two appeals have taken place. The determinations made by the Building and Safety Commissioners and the zoning administrator were based on issues that made no sense and were not the issues for the filing of the appeal. The city government's not working for the people if it refuses to accept error. The violations are very clear. By determining there is no error in this case, the city is automatically allowing all citizens, not just one citizen, but all the citizens to build on zero property line by right.
Thank you very much, ma'am. If you'd like to turn your materials over to one of the guards inside to be included as part of the official record, you can do that.
Thank you.
Mr. Kearns? And after Mr. Kearns will be Dee Clyde Williams. Mr. Clyde Williams, are you still here?
Hey, good morning. My name's Richard Kearns, polyactivist. I've given the clerk a copy of my prepared remarks, which include a transcription of U.S. Attorney General Eric Holder's Tuesday remarks signaling a federal policy change ending DEA raids on medical cannabis facilities. In fifty-one seconds, Holder declared federal pot policy changed and new. No longer the DEA snatch-and-grab model of social control, but leaving us free to be what we can make of ourselves. Suddenly, I'm a Los Angelino, living in the United States in the twenty-first century. How did it happen? Who'd have thunk? I suggest that we must now move promptly and decisively at the local level. Here's the course of action I recommend. One, extend the interim control ordinance as you did earlier this week when you extended the moratorium on digital signage. That's also way out of control. Forty percent of what's out there is illegal rogue signage, like rogue clinics. Two, reject the city attorney's current anti-productive draft. Ask the city attorney to gracefully support the working group draft before another one-hundred and fifty to two-hundred unregulated dispensaries open up. Three, set up a volunteer advisory and oversight commission with power and duty and mission to assemble and train volunteer medical cannabis stakeholders to administer the program. Four, adopt the working group regulations modeled after the county regulations. And five, set up dates for two or three revisions of an in-place working ordinance and charge the volunteer commission with collecting and generating and evaluating recommendations for those changes. The eyes of the nation and of the world are on Los Angeles now. Let us respond with courage, imagination, and confidence, and show them how it's done. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Williams is next, and after Mr. Williams will be Bria Johnson. Is Bria Johnson here?
Clyde Williams, 4115 Barrett Road, El Sereno, CD-14. Measure B in the Huron Report. This is the last access to this particular media. It's not, the Huron Report is not a statistical analysis, but is an expected approach taken by the consultant. It's not a normal distribution, it's skewed. The hardware and installation costs are confused in that they give a range of three to seven and a half, but then they say it might be as low as two-point-two to two-point-four cents per kilowatt hour, but in the DWP report, it states something in the range of four to seven times higher. There's no confidence in these costs and simulations. The expected cost of twelve cents appeared to be expected only by the mayor's office. Measure B is skewed. It puts all of the risk on the LA residents. It's a junk bond. I hope that the voters on Tuesday give Measure B a triple-F rating, and also shame on the Sierra Club. CD-14 includes El Sereno. Caltrans is treating El Sereno like it did before in the nineteen-nineties. They gave us three days' notice for a public hearing on the new seven-ten. They refused to give us information without a Public Records Act request. They gave South Pasadena adequate notice and a new western variant routing, but as South Pasadena is smaller but richer than poor El Sereno. They are getting their, setting Caltrans up for more environmental justice consequences in the future. I hope they would change their view of El Sereno. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Johnson is next, and after Ms. Johnson will be Isis.
Yes, I'm here today because basically I'm homeless right now. I've contacted my councilman's office. His staff was very, not very assistive. I did confer back and forth with Jan Han's office, who was very nice. I just want to put it out there, you have a very empathetic staff, Mrs. Han. And I contacted Mr. Weston's office, who just basically blew me off. And in about five more days, I'm going to be homeless. I have a three-year-old daughter. I just came out of a homeless situation four years ago. I'm working. I go to West LA College, and my husband works at Hertz Rental Car. And we're paying fifteen hundred dollars a month in stray rent for three years we've been doing this, and we were wrongfully evicted out of our apartment. And we have our rent, and it's personal with our landlord right now, and we went to legal aid, they basically blew us off. They filed the paperwork, did not want to represent us for some reason. And I just recently gave an attorney six hundred dollars. He took my six hundred dollars. We're not even going to get a court date to stop the judgment from the Sheriff's Department coming through. So I just wanted to be put out there that, you know, you vote for these people, you put you guys in office, nothing is done, you know? And my complaint with my landlord was, the people downstairs were smoking marijuana and playing loud music. I study, I go to school, I shouldn't have to listen to that for fifteen hundred dollars a month. I'm not on Section Eight, excuse me, and we're working people, we pay taxes. Why do we have to live in the streets five days from now? And like I said, Jan Han's office has been very, you know, compassionate, very understanding, but they told me to contact Herb Weston, who is my councilman. And I've contacted them, they don't want to do anything, and now I have to probably sleep in my car. So I just want to know what can be done. I'm down here speaking on behalf of my three-year-old.
Thank you very much. We'll see if we can get you some help. And then Ms. Isis is next.
Hello, I'm Isis Sage, Director of Justice League for Benevolence.org. Today, I urge Angelinos that we, as a united front of intelligently informed and worthy beings, demand a benevolent government, that let's vote in compassionate, law-abiding LA city officials with integrity. Let's not further permit and invite Mexican-Central-style thugs, Mexican cartel-style thugs, to impose themselves and bully bully us in our own homes, domains, neighborhoods, and never let them govern the city of L.A. Let's raise the bar now. Let's raise the moral and ethical standard, thus serving for the greater good of all, especially our precious and vulnerable children. It's very obvious, fellow Angelinos, that Mayor Villagrosa governs as a phantom. That he invites actually mistrust, not bringing the people together and not getting things done. Mayor Villagrosa is only to be seen far, far away, unattainably cold and abstractly. Yes, it's true. He is visible through the enchanting TV screen, his favorite domain, however. Angelinos do not be easily entranced, and let's not be bullishly taken again downtown to the underhanded scary doghouse of L.A. city. We must demand ongoingly of the next mayor that he be loyal to his family, friends, constituents, his political term, and loyal to all divine beings. Future mayor, you must drive your senses and not permit your ego to possess you. Be constructive. We demand the future mayor to be sound, sober, sane, and not a health hazard to Angelinos. We need you to root for Angelinos and not run corruptly, wild, and ravenous, running madly with a pack of wolves, dogs, and ecocentric vicious lions towards the president's White House. Alcalde de la Casa.
Thank you very much. Daniel Weisman is our next speaker. After that is Walter Bectel. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. President. Good morning, members of the council. This seems to be pediatric morning. Not only are we here to honor our president, who was a graduate of the University Elementary School, but we've had topics of lead poisoning, which by the way tastes sweet, and that's why it's attractive to children. We've had youth, and I'm going to talk about children. If Mr. Alarcon were here, I'd comment that you have a baby. All of you do. Your baby is called, there you are, hi. Your baby is called the city of Los Angeles, and your baby stinks, according to your city clerk. Your city clerk has said about Measure B that the whole process stinks. Well, Mr. Alarcon, you're probably the most familiar person in the room, or one of them, who knows why babies stink. I know why they stink, and I've changed my share of diapers in the past 45, 50 years as a pediatrician. But the thing stinks because of a lack of transparency. Now, when they make transparent diapers, not only will your baby stink, and you'll know it, you'll be able to see it. Measure B stinks, and you all know why. And this podium here is as much for the public as it is for you. I would love to see in the last few days before we go to the polls on next Tuesday, some of you to come out stating your thoughts about Measure B. Now, if Measure B passes, that means that the city wants solar. If Measure B does not pass, you will know that there are a lot of people who are distrustful of city government. There are 38 now neighborhood councils who have voted against Measure B. There are several dozen other institutions who have as well.
Thank you very much.
I think you want to watch the ballot because it's going to be important to all of us.
Thank you. Walter Bectel is our next speaker. After that is Michael Hunt.
Yeah, I just wanted to make clear something here. I am an agnostic myself. I don't really believe in all this stuff that everybody believes in. Reason is, is because I see them telling people to do one thing, but then they do something else, or it says, there's a lot of promises in the Bible or whatever verses that you have there, but none of them are fulfilled. But one of them that impresses me says, I forget where it is in the Bible, it says, you need to make peace with your accuser, lest your accuser hand you over to the judge, and the judge hand you over to the jailer. You will not get out until you pay the last cent. In regard to theft of intellectual property, or switching the, what you might want to say, changing, switching the proverbial license plates on somebody's intellectual property and calling it your own, to me, that would mean there's going to be, you're not going to get away with that kind of thing. But like I already said before, if your God is who he says he is, then there's going to be something done about this kind of thing. And as far as you needing to worry about what I can do about that, the only thing that's up to be concerned about is whether or not your God exists or not, in which case I have the complete victory, prove that this whole thing is a big sham, and nobody needs to bother with that garbage anymore.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michael Hunt, and then Michael Carrion.
All right, thank you, City Council. This marks a great month for Black History Month for the African-American. Two things that we've seen African-Americans achieve is, one, on February 6th, a fair jury award, Hunt versus the city of Los Angeles, and another monument, we've seen Obama make into regulation his union speech, which made a lot of sense, giving the money back to the middle class and the people that really need it and not the greedy. I had a chance this Monday to go to a debate, and my vote is in for a city council member. And everybody from the 11th district should be voting for him. His name is Bill Rosenthal. Bill, you need to iron out some of your problems, but overall, you've done a real good job compared to what I've seen. And please vote Bill Rosenthal for the 11th district. No, it's true. He's done a good job. Bill Rosenthal is the man. He's the man that I want to continue to represent me in the 11th district. We got to iron out some problems, but that's what problems are all about, is solving them. On that note, Wendy Gruhl for City Controller, let's stop the waste, and Zuma Dog for mayor. But anyways, if you're from the 11th district, get out there and vote Bill Rosenthal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Michael Carrion is next. After that, we'll hear from Zuma Dog in Van Nuys.
Yes, my name is Michael Carrion, and I'm from the 14th district. Too bad Mr. Labange is out there shaking hands. He was so busy and so concerned about my language the other day that he didn't hear the context of what I had to say. I had a couple of individuals following my daughter home, and the police department didn't want to do anything about it. They said a crime wasn't committed. Following day, there was a murder two blocks from that corner where they followed my daughter home from. Yesterday, there was a drive-by shooting two blocks from there the other way at the school. But the police department is more worried about coming in here and getting their certificates. So there's an ad in the Today's Times about the mayor and how he's running for office. I'm telling the voters out there, be careful who you vote for. He'll be here again, and then he'll run for governor, and he'll leave you abandoned, just like he left the 14th district before. And he said he'll help them. Once again, you cherish the L.A. Times, they were here, this is their ad, they're telling you to be careful. Ms. Gruhl said there were $5.7 million given out, and they don't know where they're at. I think the mayor has them put away in a fund for governor. He has them put away so he can run for governor. According to this picture, he needs a facelift. I'm sick and tired of being lied to and told that all these things are so great in my city. These numbers are ridiculous. LAPD comes up with numbers that I think come out of a Crackerjack box. With my last few minutes, I tell you this much. I'm sick and tired. None of you up here know my past, but I had to resort to gang members to keep an eye out on my daughter because you guys wouldn't. My daughter will be safe on the way home.
Thank you, Mr. Carrion. Zuma Dog is our next speaker in Van Nuys. After that is Matt Dowd. Good morning.
Yes, thank you. Good morning and good evening to the city of Los Angeles. It's so great to be here in Van Nuys on this very historic, magic moment in time. We got an election coming up on Tuesday, where the people of Los Angeles will have a chance to clean up City Hall and take back the city. And I'd like everybody listening, the people watching TV right now are the ones who are the main leaders in the community as far as I'm concerned, because they're not playing Xbox, they're not watching sports, they're not watching music videos, they're watching the city council meetings. So I urge all people watching to please tell everybody to vote March 3rd. My name's Zuma Dog, I will be on the ballot, please look for my name. And let me address to my constituency, I know a lot of people are concerned about me. They've heard things in the media about a political stunt, a media stunt, I guess you could call it, by one of the other mayoral candidates, who made allegations in the media saying that I said whatever he said I'm saying. And I'm here to say that with all certainty, I never said anything that has been alleged. There's no way it could have been misconstrued as such, and I'm here to say, whatever you're hearing in the media, that the claims are, and the words that were said, and this is TV, it's very graphic in nature, I'm here to say unequivocally, no, I did not say that. There's no way it could have been misconstrued, and I feel that this is just a media stunt trying to get, and you know what, it does work, because people go, oh, I know Zuma Dog, he's loud, yeah, he could have done that. Absolutely not. Okay, you want a media stunt, try coming to these council meetings every day for three years, sitting through these meetings, representing the voice of the people, and the people know what I stand for. And so I'm just here to say, Zuma Dog feels great, and let me spend, by the way, I know people say, well gee, why don't you take a polygraph test? I'm saying to everybody, the city, people love a media circus, let's have a media circus. Zuma Dog on live TV, take a polygraph test, where I will reject everything that's being claimed against me. And now, thank you, Los Angeles, after three years, thank you for the feedback. I love each and every person I've ever met, and thank you, I feel like the most blessed person in the city.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Dog. Matt Dowd is our next speaker, and after that will be Rick Nightengale, also in Van Nuys. Good morning.
All right, thank you so much. Matt Dowd, Channel 35, you see me coming to the meetings for three years now. I want to thank all the people who come up to me at Venice Beach and commend me on the job I do when I come up to the podium and how I address things. Today, I just want to, I got the sample ballot voter information pamphlet, and I just want to go through it and tell you how I'm thinking. So I'm going to start off with the mayor of Los Angeles, and I've got a pen, I just want to cross out all the single issue, there's people fixated on a single issue, and there's a lot of them. I'm not even going to mention their names, I'm just going to cross them all out here. And then I get to this one here, there's a guy cheated on his wife, and when he was a public official, elected official, representing the city of Los Angeles, he ran away all over the countryside, reportedly only doing 11% of his time actually doing mayoral duties, whereas, so I'm lying through that one. And I'm down to really just, there's one candidate, I'm not even going to mention the name, but he's always here, and he's got a plan, he's the only one I've seen who's actually got a strategy. Now I'm going to move on to city attorney. Noel Weiss, just check Noel Weiss, number 44 on my ballot here, and 37 for mayor, that's the number, 37. City Controller, I know Wendy's looking for my endorsement here, and I'm tempted to endorse Wendy Gruhl, only because she has intricate knowledge of all these fund transfers that we're going to be doing, and a lot of these other things that involve the city books. So I think if Zuma Dog's the mayor, then you're eligible to vote for Wendy.
Thank you very much. Rick Nightengale is our next speaker, and then Mr. Anthony back here in council chambers.
Good morning, this is Rick Nightengale. I'm strictly for here about the race. And anybody that don't vote for David Zuma Dog, I'll tell you, he is fighting for you. There's nobody around there that tells you basically the truth of what's going on. He has no qualms about it. He tells you the truth the way it's coming down, where a lot of people aren't. And you need a change, obviously. And a mayor, I'll have to admit, I voted for him the first time, and I was told you're crazy, and boy, did I make a mistake. But this time here, you ought to do it right. It's the same thing as you people voted for Arnold Schwarzenegger. He swore what he would do up there, but you didn't do what he asked you to do when the election came. He had five things for you to vote for, like a balanced budget, like what's wrong with a balanced budget, like the city ought to have? And you people voted it down. And you wonder why he can't do his job. And now you turn around and have another person running for mayor and says he will do this, and you'd be just absolutely crazy not to. Because I'd love to see him on a debate with the mayor though, oh god, would he tear him apart? But, you know, what can you do? The city attorney, this nooch, I met him, I think he's been fighting the gangs, and I think he'd be a very good gentleman to do this. This is what you need. You need a change. Like the president says, we need change, and we do need a change. I hate to say it, the council people haven't done their jobs, I've been up here every time about it, and I'm sorry, there are some good people on the council. I've talked to Mr. Zion and Smith and all that, they're trying to get to there, but I'll tell you, if you want, I just don't understand why you people try to give the farm away. You just do, and you have to cut back because you just can't keep it because you're taking food out of everybody else's mouth. So you better do the right thing and vote for Zuma Dog. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Anthony is our last speaker for general public comment here in the council chambers.
Good morning, sir. Good morning, City Council. The past few days, I've expressed utmost disappointment for our mayor. What I've said about him is sad, but true. The kid has such promise, but prescribing to the Bush-Cheney slogan, greed is good, look where it's gotten us. He's already leaving us with higher housing density. What about all the family members and friends he and the council members have placed in leadership positions? What has he done for our congestion and gridlock? It's worsening. What about his approval of Measure R in 2006 to extend council members' term limits from eight years to 12 years? Without this, six of seven council members would have been unemployed March 3rd. What about the city charter reform in 2005 that raises the salaries for himself and his council members? Listen up, Los Angeles, there's an article written two days ago, February 25th, by Patrick McDonald in the L.A. Weekly. It's 10 pages long. It's a complete expose on cronyism, waste, fraud, and corruption by the mayor and council members. Check it out. I believe last November, with the presidential elections, the citizens have realized the power of their vote. Why do you think the mayor and City Hall haven't blasted the voters with the message, come out and vote? The mayor would like you to believe he has no opposition. This candidate is not only opposing him for mayor, he's been fighting the mayor and his 15 council members for the past three years. He's been fighting for better leadership, which affects not only you and me, but our children. He's been fighting City Hall and winning. Haven't you noticed corrupt politicians always hate community activists? Neighborhood councils were created to stand up to City Hall. Six weeks ago, City Hall slapped them down for standing up for no one, Measure B. I'm voting David Salisbury, AKA Zuma Dog. The past three years, he's never asked a dime from anyone. Vote Zuma Dog.
Thank you, Mr. Anthony. That will close our general public comment. If we can go to the item called special, please.
Item 12 is called special for cards from the public.
Daniel Weisman, come forward on item 12, and then we'll hear from Zuma Dog.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I want to take the opportunity of pointing to item 12 as the one item that really involves budget, because for once in my several visits to this microphone, I want to say some nice things about several of your council members. Two articles, and one in the Daily News and one in the Times today talked about your salaries, $171,000, if those of you who are present, and several of you are, did not take the $7,000 increase. I was first attracted to this when I saw Mr. Zion had set back 10% of his $100,000.
Excuse me, Mr. President, this is about special events?
This is the budget, sir, and I'd...
No, he's not talking about special events.
Yes, it is.
Sir, if we can just bring it back to the special events and its impact, please make that connection for us. Thank you.
Well, special events are one of the items in which this city is going to have to consider whether it's going to renew that on the budget next year or not.
whether it's going to renew that on the budget next year or not. Each of us, I think, is going to have to participate, and contrary to what the city attorney thinks he knows, my earlier comments were related to the fact that we all have to share in that responsibility. In the private sector, many of us will take decreases in our income, more of us will lose our homes, as the lady who you saw here before, and the real issue is that we all have to participate in this. I think we're going to have to be very careful to be able to maintain services, and you'll hear additional suggestions from the neighborhood council people and from me, about how we might be able to do that, I hope you'll have an attentive ear, and I hope not to be interfered with by petty concepts. I'm sorry, Mr. Attorney, I have to disagree with your points of view. Thank you for hearing me now.
Thank you. We'll hear from Mr. Zuma Dogg next in Van Nuys, and then Mr. Matt Dowd.
Yes, thank you again, City of Los Angeles, Zuma Dogg, candidate for mayor, and I'd like to say, you know, everybody likes to complain about things in the city, as have I, and when I first came into City Hall, three years ago, somebody who no longer works at City Hall, they pulled me over and said, you know, Zuma, you talk every day, but there's this thing, special event fee waivers, and that's where the real money's being wasted, and so, I thank you, you know, the inside information comes from City Hall many times, and I would like to say, people complain all the time, after three years, lately, into these economic crises, the special event fee waiver has really been moving to the forefront, and people wouldn't put up with it anymore, and to quickly explain, it's when the city will waive fees to help pay for events in the city, but in this case, in cases, they've been given like $400,000 to the Academy Awards, and, you know, for a lot of commercial events, and it's not what it's supposed to be used for. So after public comments by myself and many of the people in Van Nuys and downtown, I'm very happy to say, that as I check through these special event fees, as I come through every day, I have seen a massive reduction, to where it's basically being used for the spirit in which the special event fee is supposed to. If you have an event, like, you know, a community fair, and it's non-commercial, and open to the public, then the city will pick up the tab, you know, for things like the parking people, and the police, and the trash removals, but it has gotten way out of hand, just like everything else in City Hall. So again, I don't just come out here after seeing it once, but after a couple weeks of seeing real improvement and real change, you know, right here, sponsor will reimburse the city, sponsor will reimburse the city. Here's one for only $1,000, it's for a homeless feed, so yes, the city's going to spend $1,000 for a homeless feed event, things can't shut down entirely, that's the thing, as an activist, Zuma Dogg, I have to be pragmatic, between the people that don't want to do anything, and the people that want to do everything, so I'm here to say, after three years and a lot of attention, I'm very happy, thank you, city council, we can at least point to one victory, and show up at the polls March 3rd, and give some other victories. Thank you, Los Angeles.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Matt Dowd, also in Van Nuys, then we'll come back to ISIS here in council chambers, then back out to Rick Nightingale in Van Nuys. Mr. Dowd.
Yeah, thank you. First of all, if you want to go to a special event, it's not costing the city anything, I'm planning a show at Hinano's on Washington, and Speedway tonight, it's a bar and grill right down there at Venice Beach, I'll be doing a show-
This is not on the agenda, Mr. President. If you could please stick to the special items that are on the agenda, thank you.
My apologies, sorry for getting off topic, but look, no, this is a great victory for us, and this is one of the good things we've actually done here, because, see, there's one here, for the Grammys, the Grammy party, and, see, these things sometimes run 50, 60,000, $100,000, $400,000, there was one just a couple of weeks back. And so, Jack Weiss brought out the memo in 2001, ended up going through a recall at some point, and a lot of other pressure was put on him, finally, these commercial events are repaying these to the city. But in these current financial times, and they're pretty dire straits for a lot of people, and so this is a good thing, it's, this is what activism's all about, Zuma Dogg, he got up every day, in fact, I've never seen anybody attend so many meetings consecutively, and that's the kind of thing you need, if you want someone, a member of the public, to actually represent you.
Mr. President- Thank you, straight off topic again, so we will close that comment, but thank you for your comments. ISIS is our next speaker, and then we'll come back for Rick Nightingale. Good morning.
I urge the future mayor, LA City Council, and CRA regarding special events, I encourage you to say the least, here's an idea, it's a no-brainer. Starting, and we begin with you, LA City Council, officials, and all Angelinos, as soon as possible, as in, like today, start a food drive, locally, at the flower chambers, which is here, room 340, in downtown LA, and let's just do what we are saying we're trying to do here, is help the people, prove it. Compassionately, every Angelino is invited, as well, to donate a can of food, if not, help themselves to a can of food.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, we're actually talking about some special event items that are specific before us, it's a great suggestion, but that would be more germane for a general public comment, I know a number of council members have done some other things, but if you could talk about, we'll give you the credit, don't worry, if you can make sure to talk about the special event, events that are before us right now, that's on topic, and otherwise, you'd be out of order, thank you.
Sure, well, any special event that you hold should be inclusive of a food drive, feed the people, pray for them when you go to sleep at night, and remember, we are paying for your dinner, and your food, every day.
Thank you, very much. I know a number of council members have been doing some food drives in these tough economic times, and I'm sure they'd be happy to talk to you about them. Rick Nightingale is our last speaker on this item, number 12. Mr. Nightingale.
Yes, how you doing, Rick Nightingale? On the fee waivers, I want to say, yes, you people have cut down on them, a lot, I mean, there used to be so many of them, and it was just wasted money, to a lot of it. To some people, it wasn't, but I think, when you do a free waiver, you give something away, you should be a nonprofit organization. Anytime you're a nonprofit, then that means that you do need help. New organizations come in, they do need help. For the first or second year, yes, they do need help to turn around and put this on, that is what a free waiver is for. But when you turn around, like the Academy Awards and so forth, no, you don't get free waivers. The city is throwing, is giving money away, and I call that favoritism. Anything that you turn around and do something like this, and you've been in business, any length of time, you don't make any more money, you don't need to be in business no more. And the city don't have to, does not have to turn around and give them money. But the city does have to support these people that are trying, you turn around and do things for the city, to get the people together, to know each other, to know your neighbor, and so forth. That is what a fee waiver is for, to turn around and get organization for the public. And it is coming back, you are cutting back, and I tremendously say thank you to you for that. You can do a lot more now, just remember that, and I think if Zuma Dogg gets in, there's going to be a lot of changes made, and I hope so, because he will be behind the fee waivers that clamp down deeper and deeper. And that's what it's going to take, for Zuma Dogg for mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you. That'll close our public comment on this item. If you could please prepare the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved. Next order of business, please.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those are posted and referred.
Desk is clear.
All right, do we have any announcements, folks? Any announcements about any meetings? Of course, we remind folks that by the time we start meeting, next Tuesday, will be election day, so remember to go out and vote. There have been some changes, I know, to voting locations, those are available at the city clerk's website, that is at lacity.org/clk for clerk, or you can always call 311, and they should be able to assist you with any of the new sites, since some of those have been consolidated. If there are no other announcements, can we, do you have announcement? Okay. Can I ask everybody, please rise for adjourning motions? Thank you. We'll start with Mr. Alacron.
It is with great sadness that I rise today and ask that we adjourn in the memory of a great leader and woman, State Senator Nell Soto. State Senator Nell Soto passed away yesterday afternoon of complications of diabetes and a stroke she had had suffered some time ago. I know Councilmember Weston and Carver has joined with me in this presentation, as she was our colleague in the state legislature. Senator Soto was 82 years old, she was born in Pomona on June 26, 1926, to a family that had lived in the area for six generations. She grew up in the Depression era, facing many challenges of the tide, she persevered and learned from those experiences. In 1946, she married the late Phil Soto. Phil Soto became the first Latino elected to the California State Legislature in 1962. Phil was a pioneer for many Latinos who served in the state legislature, and Nell was not far behind. She was a tireless advocate, who was not afraid to stand up for what she believed was right, and for many years, she served behind the scenes in that leadership role. Prior to her arrival in the legislature, Soto served for nearly 12 years on the Pomona City Council. Her active, hands-on leadership resulted in many life-enhancing improvements for Pomona and its residents. In an effort to make the city safer, she helped create satellite police stations, and an equestrian patrol unit for downtown streets. Her tireless efforts led to a zero tolerance policy for graffiti, and the removal of gang members from city parks. On the council, she implemented a youth job program that has employed over 150 young people in the community. Soto's efforts were also instrumental in securing $22.5 million for the Pomona MetroLink and Transit Station. She served on the Pomona City Council from 1986 to 1998. In 1993, she became the first Latino elected to be appointed to serve on the board of the South Coast Air Quality Management District, where I joined her shortly thereafter, and worked with her for several years at the AQMD. She became, she began and earnest her career as an environmentalist. She is credited with opening the regulatory process to all affected parties, and helping to streamline the compliance process. Her presence on the AQMD board also gave a voice to legions of small businesses that had long been excluded from the regulatory process. In 1997, her husband, Phil, passed away, and a year later, at the age of 72, Senator Soto won a seat in the state assembly, representing the 61st Assembly District. A year later, Senator Soto won a special election to replace Joe Baca in the state senate, representing the 32nd District, after Baca left to fill a vacancy in Congress. As her colleague, I can tell you, she was a strong proponent for jobs and economic development in her district, she was the driving force behind turning the closed General Dynamics Plant in Pomona into a furniture manufacturing facility, that will bring 5,000 new jobs to the surrounding communities. Her legislative priorities included improving schools, by encouraging parental involvement in the classroom, working to create high-paying jobs, and ensuring that the communities are safe from crime and violence. I had the pleasure to serve with her as a member of the state senate, and I can tell you that she was always shrewd, and cunning, and tenacious, she was a fighter for what she believed in. As the chair of the pensions committee, I can tell you that she worked to ensure that the pension investments were made for things that would benefit California, especially creating jobs in California, and also to expand the loop of folks who could participate, particularly California-based companies, as opposed to just New York-based investors. She was a tremendous fighter. Also, she is related to the city family, because her son, Tom Soto, who is a longstanding member of Mayor Bradley's staff, he was my environmental advisor when I ran for city council in 1993, and is a longtime friend to the city family. Nell did a lot of work for a lot of folks, it would take hours to talk about all the work that she did, but I have to say that she was a grassroots politician, she never lost sight of how she achieved success, and where she came from, because she never left where she came from. And she is a role model, I think, to those who think that polish is something that adds to your character as a politician, but in fact, it's just having good common sense. Nell Soto had good common sense. She was amazing, she was a fireball, and I know her probably has some funny stories that he would either say or not say in public, but all of us did. She was a character, she was somebody that was always willing to fight or laugh on a second's notice, and believe me, she is somebody that you always wanted on your side, because she would do so, so well. She passed this Thursday, yesterday, February 26th, and the services will be announced shortly. She is survived by Tom Soto, Patrick Soto, Phil Soto, and Anna Soto, 11 grandchildren, three great-grandchildren, and a whole host of literally millions of folks that she had touched with her work in the legislature, and as, on her service at the AQMD, and in the city of Pomona.
Thank you also on Ms. Soto, other folks, Mr. Rosen.
Thank you very much. I want to express my sympathies to the family, and certainly acknowledge the tremendous work she has done, on behalf of all Californians, as Mr. Alacron mentioned, and, you know, when we talk about political, Latino political empowerment in California, we focused on the 80s, and particularly here in Los Angeles, but she truly was a pioneer. She was empowering other Latinos, and was a first in many respects, in her area, whether it was Pomona, La Puente, the Imperial Valley, and also, she did at a time that was before the 80s, she was out there opening and breaking barriers, and so, way before the 80s, the 60s even, so she is someone who has been there quietly, didn't always look for the glamour, but working hard, getting things done, way before even the 60s, as Mr. Alacron correctly stated right now. She, I got to know her a little bit when I was in the school, where when I'd go up to the state legislature, and had a lot of great ideas, and was just a person that everyone respected, and I really kind of miss her sometimes, when we joke about how things are happening, how things are going here in Los Angeles, and she was just a great, great person all around.
Also, Ms. Soto, Mr. Parks, will come in.
I'd just like, on behalf of Jan Perry, she wanted her name added to, on that adjourning motion, because she had a long-term relationship with the senator as part of AQMD, and also wanted to comment about her particular efforts in the California League of Cities, and also the legislation that deals with safe passages, so to add that to that list of accomplishments.
Thank you. Mr. Nuys.
Want to recognize and acknowledge all of her contributions, in particular, right as I started as a council member, I got to visit with her, and she shared a lot of information regarding watershed issues, and she was very intrigued about the Los Angeles River, at first she found it amusing, and then she started getting into its role and its impact on the watershed, and how that had to do with water issues, and environmentalist points of view, as a Latina, as a woman, but I really appreciated her humbleness. When we spoke, it was like talking to a family relative, she was very down-to-earth, and just broke things down, in a very basic manner. And I remember one meeting she couldn't make, because she was sick, but she actually got on the phone, we had a speakerphone with a raspy voice and a cold, she just plowed through the discussion, and I admired that tenacity and that dedication, so we're going to miss her, a big leader of our time.
Thank you. Mr. Rosen, and then Mr. Weston.
You know, we live and we learn, and we experience things, The Times did a piece about her relationship with her son, Tom, and gay rights, about 10 years ago, but you know, we live and we learn, and her son, Tom, of course, an openly gay activist, and a true leader in the community, and his mother got together after that vote in 1999, and she became a huge champion for gay and lesbian rights, when she understood the dimensions of her own son, and the civil liberties that go forward, so, just to put a footnote in The Times piece, not only did she come around, but she became a strong supporter of basic human and civil rights, and her son, Tom, played a major role in that, and I send a special sympathy to Tom, losing his mother like that.
Thank you, Mr. Rosen, and then Mr. Weston.
Thank you, Mr. President and members. I first got to know Nell through her daughter, who worked for me when I was chief deputy for supervisor, Yvonne Burke, and this woman, who was only this big, was elected the same year that we, where you were elected to the senate, and she and I were elected to the assembly. And she was tough as nails, and I know that she did a lot to help Latinos in government and Latinos in politics, but what a lot of people don't understand, that Nell was truly ahead of her time, because she believed that all people should be treated equally, and she did a lot to help African-Americans as well. she did a lot to help African-Americans as well, and she judged people based on who the person was and not what the person looked like. And Nell had no patience, none. And I will tell you, this one story, was in the Assembly at the, was the local government committee, and there was an assemblyman, a newly-elected assemblyman, who was articulating an issue to this committee, and I must admit that this assemblyman was on a roll, he had this very passionate speech, and you would get applause from the crowd, and it was, and it felt good to him, and all of a sudden, she interrupted and said, "Mr. Weston, quit pontificating so I can vote yes on this damn thing." So I shut up and got the yes vote, but she was a great lady, and she will be missed. And it also proves that, you know, age really has nothing at all to do with one's desire to serve, because as Richard indicated, when she was elected to the California State Assembly, she was 72 years old, and she just had this burning desire to serve. I knew that she was ill, but I must admit that I was caught off guard when I received the call yesterday that she had passed on. She was a good one, and she, 82, she had a good run, but I am going to shut up, because I don't want to hear the voice of Nell Soto telling me to quit pontificating and just move on.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weston, and thank you, Mr. Alacón, for doing that.
I have to mention one thing, for those people who don't know who Nell Soto is, every time you pull into a gas station, you get water or air, it's, you're getting it free because of Nell Soto.
That was her first big, big thing.
I just want to also say, and thank you, Mr. Alacón, for doing that, the Soto family has been very close to mine as well, and thank you for the thoughts for Tom, who's a dear friend and has been a close advisor and supporter, both mine and my father's. Soto, in Boyle Heights, is actually named after their family, and it wasn't just Nell and Tom who've been pathbreakers, but of course, Nell's husband, who was the first Latino elected to the state legislature in modern times, and the entire Soto family, which has had its imprint and its legacy. Nell Soto was a fighter to the very best, she was of that generation of women who probably had to fight very hard, which is why she was so tough, but she always did it for the right reasons. A woman of few words, and those words were sharp, but that's what got stuff done, and we will very, very much miss her, and our deepest condolences to the family. Mr. Laban.
I ask that we adjourn in memory of Joe Garvey. Joe was the Dodgers' best driver for over 25 years, his son was a bad boy with the Dodgers, later, you all know the story of Steve Garvey. Joe was an inspiration to the Dodgers, because every year for 25 years in Beryl Beach, he would transport them to and from the various games. I ask that we adjourn, and Joe Garvey, he's survived by his wife, Millie, and his son, Steve.
Thank you. Mr. Rosen.
Yes, David Bryan Abrams. David Bryan Abrams was the beloved son of Pepper Edmiston and stepson of Joseph Edmiston, who we all know is the executive director of the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy. He is also the son of Herbert Abrams. David passed away unexpectedly but peacefully at his home in the Pacific Palisades early Sunday morning, February 22nd. David was 34 years of age and a survivor of early childhood leukemia. He was a gentle soul who helped inspire his mother's creation of Camp Good Times and later Happy Trails camping experiences for severely ill and disabled children and young people. He's survived by his mother, Pepper Edmiston, stepfather, Joe Edmiston, father, Herbert Abrams, and grandparents, Max and Janet Salter. May he rest in peace.
I'd like to second that, all members, yes. Are you having an adjournment motion, Mr. Rosen, as well? I'm sorry.
Ask that we do, all members, and you know, as many of you know, Joe Edmiston is no stranger to these chambers, and someone that both Councilmember Reyes and I worked closely on the Vista Hermosa Park, and I'm sure most, many of you have worked with him on a number of issues in your districts, but I did want to express my sincerest condolences to the family, and from what we heard and know, this young man was a very special person, who had a lot of love and cared a lot for his family and his community, and he's sure he's going to be missed by all.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Are there adjourned motions? Okay, Mr. Laban and I would both like to adjourn in memory of Martin Eli Wile, a leading restoration architect and a past president of the Los Angeles Conservancy, who was involved in the restoration of landmark structures such as the El Capitan Theater in my district, the Frank Lloyd Wright-designed storehouse in the Hollywood Hills in Mr. Laban's district. He died at 68. He was a longtime resident of the historic West Adams area of Los Angeles, he died in his home in the Harvard Heights neighborhood. His body was found Tuesday by a neighbor, said Lauren Schlow, a friend who said that Wile died of a presumed heart attack. He was an expert in historic design materials and colors, and he specialized in restoration projects of landmark historic homes and other properties, including being a consultant on the restoration and preservation of the Henry and Arabella Huntington Mausoleum at the Huntington Library, art collections and botanical gardens in San Marino. In the early 80s, Wile and Eric Lloyd Wright, grandson of Frank Lloyd Wright, were the restoration architects on the 1923 storehouse, and he was a founding member of the L.A. Conservancy formed in 1978 as part of the community-based effort to prevent the demolition of the Los Angeles Central Library and other threatened landmarks. He served two stints as president of the Conservancy in the 80s and was involved in the preservation of landmarks, including City Hall in Pasadena and the Watts Towers. As a restoration architect, he was known for what the L.A. Times writer in 1989 referred to as his, quote, "scrupulous attention to detail." That was evident after he began scraping away layers of paint on the living room walls of Frank Lloyd Wright's Holly Hawk House, and was unable to find any trace of the original color scheme. He accidentally discovered that paint flakes from the original color scheme had fallen into the lighting soffits in the living room, and that helped guide the restoration that we've now been doing at Holly Hawk House. Born in Glasgow, Montana, on July 2, 1940, he earned a bachelor's degree from the University of Iowa, before receiving a master's in architecture from the University of Pennsylvania. He also had a master's in early American culture and decorative arts from the University of Delaware. He's survived by his brothers Jesse and Peter. He was the prime mover to establish Friends of Sim Shalom, which provides financial support to the Sim Shalom congregation in Budapest, Hungary, where his sister-in-law is the rabbi. His family suggests that donations in his memory be made online at www dot friendsofsimshalom, S-I-M-shalom, dot org, or to other charitable organizations, and memorial service is pending. Mr. Laban.
The wonderful thing about this city is people step up when there are things that happen and they get involved. Martin was one of those, in the early days, when they had a vision, it was the wrong vision, to destroy the Central Library, and then forming the Conservancy that will turn many other billions, involve and save a great architect. He'll be sorely missed, he was a contributing writer to many local newspapers as well. He rest in peace.
Thank you. We will next be in session on Tuesday, election day, that of course is March 3. Meantime, Mr. Clerk, if you'll call the roll, and this meeting of the Los Angeles City Council is adjourned. Have a great weekend, and we will see you all Tuesday. Don't forget to vote.